Welcome to the Board of Education, Grand Rapids Board of Education meeting. This is our work session, so it's less formal than our traditional meeting. We have one item on our agenda that will probably take us a few hours, actually. Thanks for being here, and we will start with roll call.
Baker.
Here.
Al.
Here.
Eason.
Here.
Hoskins.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Randles.
Present.
Slade.
Here.
President Lanier.
Present.
All are present.
We have an agenda before us, they need a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion to approve the agenda is written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Great, we have an agenda. Our next item is public comment. I have not received any public comment cards. If there's anyone who's interested in giving public comments, we do have cards located on the table in the halls. If you have a completed card, if you can hold them up, someone will grab them and bring them up here for us. Any public comment? Great, so we will move forward. Madam Superintendent, we will get right into the agenda. We should probably all shift, you're going to use the PowerPoint, am I correct?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to start by going over some of the background information of how do we get to this point? And then I will submit to you the plan and ask you to give consideration for the next five or six weeks while we work to really close this down. After more than 10 months of working, and really it's been four years, but 10 months of intense work, I am pleased to present you with the first draft of the Transformation Plan for Quality, Choice, and Sustainability. Before I get into the details of the plan, though, I think it's important first to know how. How was this plan developed? And why is this plan needed right now? This Transformation Plan has been informed, designed, and developed based on the engagement and input of literally thousands of students, parents, teachers, school leaders, support staff, community partners, volunteers, and many external stakeholders over the past four years. And actually, it starts back to 2001, when we first started this. We did in 2001, 2004, and '08 with our bond. This plan is really the best thinking from me, my team, and it is based on wisdom, honest criticism from many, many people over the past five weeks. I believe it's very thoughtful, and it is creative. During the past few years, in engaging thousands of people, not only in the past six months, but in the past few years, we have asked the question specifically related to building improvements, school and program consolidations, and other changes that's needed in our facilities to maximize space. We've talked about consolidating athletics and addressing any excess waste in this system. So this is really a continuation of what we did years ago, when we built our 11 new buildings, including our Housman Field as well. The second part of this came from our strategic plan. In 2010-11, the plan went beyond facilities. We talked to thousands of people, and we came up with a comprehensive plan for academics, instruction, leadership, sports, safety, health and wellbeing, finance partnerships. So we have several spokes in that strategic plan. Once again, my listening tour took all of that information. We talked to several people, I listened to several people in the community. And I just asked those four basic questions that you are familiar. What's working? What's not working? What are the barriers? And what are those innovative solutions? We've taken all of this information and started this, this plan. I presented at the state of the schools that we would change. I said at that point, we were going to make a difference, we were going to change. I shared some of the challenges and the barriers that I heard from the listening tour. I also shared what are those things that's working. Some of the barriers were too many initiatives, lack of alignment, the disinvestment of arts, scheduling, HR inconsistent implementation of our policies. And then we said, what's working? PBIS, Institute for Learning, we have several great things that's working in the district. So I took that information as a part of this plan. As a result of that, during the past eight months, we looked at how do we align our talent, our resources, have those initiatives that will support teaching and learning. The academic plan, and I've shared that with you, that really is the center of our universe in this district. It is the lifeblood and the heartbeat of everything you will see tonight, this Transformation Plan. It is about academic achievement. The Academic Achievement Plan is living, a living, breathing document, we believe in it. We believe that that document will continue to be improved as we move forward. It's a living document. We also believe it is an overarching umbrella that will guide this Quality, Choice, and Sustainability Plan that we will talk about tonight. We also gathered information from our Cambridge Review, our district-wide review. You will see that information in this plan. That was the independent audit that talked about, shared with us, how best to sustain this district, to move it forward, so that we are a viable option. That information was shared with you back this summer. Further confirmed some of the things that we already knew about the district, some of those issues, challenges, opportunities related to quality, culture, talent, choice, sustainability, stability, and urgency. A major part of the recommendation was for the district and the board to produce an action plan that would sit alongside our vision statement. They also shared that consolidation at the district level and school level is required in order for us to compete. They suggested that we save resources from funding schools that are not economically viable, and that we should use those funds for new and attractive options. So we took all of this information, and that's how we arrived here today. And we've developed the Transformation Plan: Building the Future Together. That's the how. Now let's look at the why. This really is not just about the future of GRPS. It really is about the future growth and success of the schools, the city, as well as the region. It's going to impact all of us. We need high-quality schools to contribute to this economic vitality of West Michigan. High-quality schools in the city will produce a quality workforce. High-quality schools will attract families, businesses, investments, and jobs in this But the main reason, the why, is that every child, every child in Grand Rapids, we believe they should reach their academic potential and enter adulthood, ready for a college career, the global marketplace, and a life that's better and more prosperous than the last We all have a stake in this. I know that it's going to be difficult, and I've shared that with people in this conversation. This is heavy lifting. Even more specific, we are facing very difficult academic challenges, financial challenges. Our enrollment, we know, over the past 10 years, we've declined by 7,000 students. We've closed more than 25 schools already, and we've cut $100 million. But as we've talked about this before, we don't believe in this slow, constant, painful cut. We agreed that we would be proactive, look at where we are, take all of this information, and then make changes. The 10 years of instability, unpredictability, disruption, and a churn is just a slow process, and it may have made this worse. And cutting $100 million, that's a lot of money, you guys. And so here today is where we are. Far too many schools are underperforming academically and underutilized, or we're spending money on operations. We know and understand far too many children are not achieving at high levels. The graduation rate is low, we know that. Our dropout rate is too high. We have 10 schools that are on the state's lowest 5%, and five schools are on the federal government's lowest 5%. We know we need more of our students meeting the mark on ACT and MME. We're dealing with absenteeism. Chronic absenteeism is an issue, but we're working to change that. 17 of 43 buildings are at capacity or below, 60%, and two of those you'll see are some of the new buildings that we just built. And this one is kind of difficult, but we know that a couple of schools are right on the verge of an education achievement authority takeover. They've already said it. But I'm saying, we know how to do this. We know how to turn this around. These are the harsh academic and operational challenges, so this is why we must turn this district around and do so now. Even though we have all of these challenges, we also have schools that are beating the odds. Blanford Economicology, Coit City Zoo, they're all listed as reward schools by the state and the federal government. And people may say, well, it's because you test them. That aside, we are running great programs, and there's something that we can learn. So as we move forward, we want to remember that. Last year, City, Creston, and Union High School had some of the highest gains on the ACT scores in the county. Four of our schools were ranked in the top 10 performing schools by the Mackinac Center, and this was the first time ever. Prior to the new cut scores, and from 2006 to '10, we nearly doubled the number of schools meeting AYP, and we quite tripled the number of schools earning a B or better on the EdYes report. We are the region's leading English language learner programs. We have some of the best special ed programs. Our zoo school was named one of the coolest schools by Parent Magazine, I think it was 25th, ranked 25th. We also have the 2012 Michigan Teacher of the Year, our own Bobby Joe Kenyon. So we are, in fact, very capable of excellence. We have pockets of excellence. We know how to do the right thing for children. But as you all agree, pockets of excellence is just not good enough. Every child, every child in this district has unlimited potential to learn. And as the superintendent, the superintendent of this great district, it is my job to ensure that every child in every classroom and every school reaches their potential. We don't want it for five schools, we want it for every school. And we know in order to do that, we have to have high-quality schools with high-quality principals, teachers, and we must create a culture for learning in every classroom. We are on our way. I've told many people, we can only ring this bell once. We have to do it right this time, and do it now. We need to prepare our children for the 21st century. Again, this comes directly from the strategic plan, I didn't make this up, right? We've listened to the community, and so we want to move forward. We believe that all children can achieve their academic potential through effort, high expectations, and quality teaching. Our vision is to become this world-class district, and we've talked about that. We want to define what this world-class is. And if we believe that our district should be a world-class performing school district, one with a diverse portfolio, top-quality schools, educational talent, we want to meet the academic needs for every child, social, physical, and in all areas, we want to address the whole child in this district. And these goals are simple. The first one, we want to strengthen and improve academic achievement. Again, the academic plan is driving this Quality, Choice, and Sustainability Plan. This is just one piece. The foundation that honestly and strategically realigns resources, truly based on academic and instructional need. We're going to take resources and really invest in the best possible program that we can. We are committed to increasing the graduation rate, reducing the dropout rate, eliminating all of our schools from that 5% list. And we're going to increase the number of students who are college-ready, and increase the number of highly effective principals, teachers, district support staff, and others in the building. We want to ensure high-quality educational environments for teaching and learning. That's increasing the number of schools at or below, that are at or below right now the 70% mark. Increase the number of schools and classrooms with resources and technology that will support teaching and learning. We believe in establishing a positive culture of high expectations, accountability, and customer service. We're increasing the percentage of students who feel engaged and supported, increasing positive response from students, parents, staff, and community about district and customer service. And if you go in the buildings, you may have seen some of this already, we've started down this path, we started in January. We will reduce the number of students who are chronically absent. We have already started increasing parental involvement. Again, the overarching goal of this Quality, Choice, and Sustainability Action Plan is, and we don't like this term, rationalizing resources. It just means we need to be very careful where we spend our money. We need to refocus. We need to be strategic in building human capital and ensure high-quality choices for every student. Changing, closing, consolidating programs and services that are unsustainable, persistently failing, that's not working. We're going to rethink our business. We're going to reinvest the savings, part of the savings, part of it we're going to put away. But part of the money that we save, we will save from this plan, we're going to reinvest in the programs, but we will put some in the bank. In order for us to continue as a district, we have to put some in the bank, we need to plan for the future, and we will do that. In developing this plan, we followed academic performance, are they working or not? Kind of simple. Maximizing quality and efficiencies, pooling talent, how do we maximize our academic results in the most cost-effective, educational, effective way? What are those best practices? What's working? How do we replicate, expand, create new? We looked at enrollment and the population trends, building capacity, the infrastructure. Is it new, old? What's the condition of the building? Historical neighborhood perspective? And now we're going to get into what this plan is all about. Really, keep three, just three key things I want you to remember. It's about our children and ensuring they reach their academic potential with equal access to high-quality schools and the best, again, most talented teachers, principals, and other administrators. It's about stopping what's not working and expanding what is, and offering high-quality Few things we're going to focus on in this plan. This is a big change. We're going to do it now, then we're going to stabilize the district and become very predictable in what we do. We believe in neighborhood schools, theme centers of innovation, early childhood centers, but equal access to everyone in every part of the city. We're going to expand on early childhood, focus on college and career readiness, expanding opportunities for students to participate in the middle college, dual enrollment, increasing our partnerships with higher ed, expanding the number of K8s and pre-K8s. We are transitioning away from mini comprehensive secondary schools, and we're going to redefine secondary schools in Grand Rapids. Increased investment and an expansion of the theme schools, really rededicating them to those theme schools. Establishing cultural centers. We have language centers in Grand Rapids, and language is such a small piece, just one piece, of the children that we serve. So we're going to create cultural centers and allow the community to come in and help us define what that should look like. Elimination of alternative calendar. School uniforms, and I know students, they don't really want this, but you know what, you guys, the research is clear. Pre-K through 5 next year, and pre-K through 8 for some schools, pre-K through 8 the year after, and then pre-K through 12. Research is real clear. And we will work with schools and students and the student advisory to decide when and on what days children will pick what they wear. But we're going to do this across the district. Consolidate, consolidation of athletics. In the strategic plan, we talked about the district should go to two teams, and actually this started in 2008. We're going to do it. We are going to create competitive teams, but we're also going to put the resources in so that we can focus on having students prepared all year, not for their season, right? We want every child in the district to get there. We are going to look at recruiting and retaining the highest and most qualified staff around. And in order to do that, we're going to do, complete a compensation study. Not by me, we're going to bring someone in to do that. We need to pay for the best. And right now, we cannot compete with other districts in this county. We need to pay. So we're going to do a study. We're going to restructure central office so that the programs, offices are aligned to serve students and schools. We are going to continue to work with the city of Grand Rapids, preserving green space and parkland as we have in the past. There's five terms that you will see in this study. One is to reinvest, recommit, closure and repurpose, close, and then to grow. This plan, the majority of this plan, we're going to do in the fall of this year. I will ask you to support part of the plan to study a year from now, and some even from 2015 to '18. But everything we do in the district, we will do well, or we will not do it. The first school I'll ask you to reinvest in is Aberdeen, it's a K8. Right now, we have Aberdeen, K7. We didn't provide transportation, so I'm asking that we reinvest in Aberdeen. We'll create a larger attendance area, but we can't have a middle school and then not provide transportation. The second is CA Frost. CA Frost is a theme school, and because of budget cuts, we reduced the theme school And so it's a science school, but receives the same amount as every other school in the district, and we need to have a focus of science. Centers of Innovation, Academy for Design and Construction, GRAPCEP, which is our engineering program, School of Business, at Ottawa Hills High School, our Health Science at Central. I am asking you to consider moving that program to downtown Grand Rapids Central High as a Center of Innovation High School. Currently, many of our students that participate- Currently, many of our students that participate in the COIs don't have the proper teachers in front of them, some of them are on computers, and it's just not the best way to go for COIs. This will allow us to have teachers that can be shared in each of the programs. We can offer more AP classes. It's a greater opportunity for those children. Central will hold about thirteen, fourteen hundred students. This is about six hundred and fifty. So it will allow us to have additional students there in the program. The other high school program that will be at Central is Montessori. And you'll see that I would like to increase that program. The next one is City High and Middle. I've asked you already to allow me to hire a coordinator for the IB program because we can't have an IB program without the coordinator. I thank you for allowing me to do that. The next one is Quaid Creative Arts. Even though Quaid is on the list as a reward school, again, we took the theme school money because of budget cuts. And I'm saying let's reinvest if we truly believe in themes. I would ask that you allow me to reinvest dollars in the theme program. Congress Elementary. Congress is a neighborhood school. School was built for about four hundred students, we have about three fifty, about three hundred students there. But it's a neighborhood that is growing. We have several programs there. Again, I would ask that we reinvest. Grand Rapids, Montessori. We have Montessori teachers that have never been trained in Montessori and the methodology, and I'm saying let's train every teacher that decides to teach in Montessori. I thank you. You've already allowed me to spend fifty thousand dollars a year for the next five years to train every teacher that comes through the Montessori program. We need to be the best. K E C Oakley and Mayfield. Currently, the Mayfield program, we have about forty-eight, forty-five, forty-eight students there and about fifty at Oakley. I'm asking that we close one down, working with the ISD, create one program, and then we can put extra resources for the total program with less than a hundred students. One other piece about that is some of those children can go back to their neighborhood school. We need to provide support, PD, but we really need to reexamine the students that we've placed there. Mulek Park, again, it's a neighborhood school, I ask that you allow me to reinvest in that neighborhood and create a neighborhood school. North Park, Montessori, currently North Park, there's really two programs at North Park. We have a hundred and thirty-six students in the North Park Elementary Program. Over two hundred Montessori students in the Montessori Program. I'm ask, asking you to consider consolidating one program to create a North Park, Montessori, pre-K eight. Again, if we don't build the pipeline for a Montessori program, in the end, we're really saying we don't believe in the Montessori High as well, but we need to give that program a chance to grow. Ottawa Hills High School was built for one thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven students, we currently have over six hundred students in the program. I have spoken with the president of Howard University, a historically black college, and I have the request for six others to see if they would be willing to partner with us so children can have a pipeline to college. They have said yes, Howard said yes. The other half of Ottawa Hills, Ottawa was built for almost two thousand students. And we have talked about creating an IB school. And I would ask that we consider Ottawa, one of the houses, either north or south, as the home for the International Baccalaureate Program. And then we grow that program. We will have to do a few nips and tucks though to Ottawa. But it's cheaper than a fifty-five million dollar building. Shawmut Hills, I ask that you consider a K eight at Shawmut. Southwest Community Campus is also a theme school. I ask that you reinvest, it's a dual immersion program. And let's reinvest the theme school money in the dual immersion program. Stocking Elementary, we closed Stocking a few years ago. True neighborhood school, over five hundred students. I'm asking you to reconsider opening the elementary school. We will redistrict the students on the northwest side and open Stocking for that neighborhood. Under recommitment, Alger, Alger is currently a SIG school. And we understand that we must close the achievement gap. And we are positioned to do so. I would ask that you consider allowing us to work with a turnaround specialist, we have to submit the plan to the state by November twenty-ninth. But we really need to help students and teachers and principals, that entire community, to get off the list. That's the threat of the takeover, is Alger. Brookside Elementary. I would ask that we move two preschool programs from Straight to Brookside and allow that program to grow. Burton Elementary and Middle. We would recreate and work with the entire community for that program campus. I would ask that we allow the principal and that assistant principal to stay for the next few years. We, during the past five years, we've had five principals, and I'm saying we need to hold this community steady for a minute. It's too much journey. Center for Economicology. Again, to recommit, we have about seven slots available. We will recruit and fill that to capacity. Caesar Ichaves, we will work with the community again to recommit to that neighborhood. East Leonard Elementary, and East Leonard has been on this chopping block. It, it's even before two thousand and one. But they are doing some great things, that community is intact. And I just ask for support to continue with East Leonard. They're moving down the right path. Harrison Park Elementary and Middle. About nine hundred students at that school. Doing some great things, working with our partners, the Grand Rapids Community Foundation on the Challenge Scholars. We've met. Diana Seeger is committed to working with us to create a plan for all of those children that will attend Union, so we're going to reinvest and work with our partners on that one. Kent Hills, we need to make some changes there. But we have room, we have room for other children to attend, that's one of our newer buildings. MLK and Palmer. Both doing well. We are not going to leave not one building off the list. We are going to work with principals, with stakeholders in those communities to show our commitment. Riverside Middle. Riverside is on this list. But I will tell you, Riverside, three hundred and forty-six students attend from that community. At some point, before you vote, I will bring additional information to, about Riverside. We need to create a plan to help that community decide the best way to go. Either we fill Riverside or we move forward, but we have space for about two hundred students at Riverside. Sibley Elementary. I will ask you to move two preschool programs, classrooms from Straight to Sibley. And again, allow that program to grow. Union High School, Union High School is on the list for a possible takeover from the Education Achievement Authority. I believe in my heart. We can turn this around with Union. We have the right leadership there. We will add additional support. But I believe that we will close the achievement gap. Matter of fact, Union, remember, we made gains. We will be connected with the plan for the state for four years, but one more year and all of a sudden we go back to zero. So we're not giving up on Union, we believe that we can do it. We also have a very committed governance board. We have a partnership with Fair Estate University. People are committed, and we're going to stay with Union. Our University Preparatory Academy, we will be moving to our new building on Division, we're really excited about that. But I need to tell you, the building that I call Ed Park, some people call University Prep, some may even call it City. I am asking you to tear that down. You know, I've said I'm not wedded to any one thing, right, Ed Park. I said I'm not wedded to any one thing in this plan, I am wedded to that, you guys. That building does not fit in that neighborhood. I'm going to ask that you tear that down. We need to get the traffic off of college and line, it's not even safe for children. We need to create a turnaround driveway for parents and build some green space. Ken told me beautification costs too much, cute is not so expensive. I'm asking for something in the middle. Ken will work that out, but something that should fit in that neighborhood is what I'm looking for. Westwood Middle. Westwood is on the list as a threat for a takeover. But again, you guys, I'm committed and I believe that we can do it. Now, we may do some different things, it could be Westwood Union One Campus. It could be Westwood Stand Alone, I'm not real sure. But we are committed to the children, the families, and the staff members at Westwood Middle. Closures for repurpose. Central Creston Union in Ottawa, the Pinnacle Programs, five to ten students in the basement with one or two teachers is not the way to go. We are not going to do that to our children. We are going to take them back in the fold of the district, teach them, offer them the best program that we can. But we will no longer push those students aside. The same with Stride, we're going to create an alternative ed program that we believe is just another choice for students. We will not cast them out. Dickinson, our new building, was built for five hundred, over five hundred students, we currently have two hundred students. I will ask that you close that down and create a pre-K eight and work with partners in this community. There's a group Seeds of Promise. They're doing some things in that community, I would ask that we partner with them and see what that program should look like at Dickinson. Gerald, our Ford Middle School. Built for five hundred and ninety-seven students. We have two hundred and twenty students in that building. Again, I ask that you close that down. We created a new program, pre-K through eight with a theme, district-wide, and academic center. That would be in the lines of Southeast Academic Center, a very successful program that we had in the district. Ken O'Shea Elementary. We have two programs at Ken O'Shea, Van Alken and Ken O'Shea Elementary. Ken O'Shea was built for four hundred and forty students, we have a hundred and ninety-six students in that building. Ninety-six that live in the area. I would ask that we close that down and create a preschool university, we do that so well. Move programs to the Ken O'Shea Building, we can share staff, maximize the number of staff members we have in that building. Sherwood Park is the next one, Sherwood Park is currently a theme school. It really isn't, it is a theme school in name. Eleven percent of the students that live in that area attend Sherwood. I'm asking that we create an attendance area and Sherwood becomes a pre-K through five. We talked about North Park, the expansion of, of Montessori. Closures. Campa Park. Campa was built for five hundred students, we have two hundred students currently attending that program. I would ask that you close that building down and that would become a true closure. Cobra Elementary, built for five hundred and five students. We have a few hundred students, a couple hundred students, a little over a couple hundred students there. Again, I would ask that you close that down. And in closing these down, we will redistrict, reboundary these schools, and I don't have my other map, but, but we do have a plan to do that. Creston High School is a hard pill for me to swallow, I am a polar bear. Creston was built for one thousand three hundred and eighty-seven students. We currently have six hundred students there. Two hundred belong to Grab Set. Remember, Grab Set will move to Central High, to the Centers of Innovation, that leaves four hundred students. A hundred and thirty-seven students from Creston live in the Ottawa Hills attendance area, so at any time they could decide to go to Ottawa, we will have two hundred and seventy students at Creston. Creston costs about one point five million dollars to operate. I love them all. But we have to say what's best for all students, what's best for this entire district. Hillcrest. We have opened and closed Hillcrest about ten times, if not more, I am asking to close it and sell it. We talked about K E C Mayfield. The Ridge Moore CDC Program. I am asking that we hold on to the building and the property. However, I am asking that we move the program to Ken O'Shea. And you will see on your maps, some of the, the schools, you guys, we need to hold on fifty, sixty years, I've been looking at the minutes from a hundred and eight years ago, very interesting. So some of the property, I would ask. No, they're not, I have to share, share them with you. It's really interesting to look at. And it's from the board meetings. I will share those with you. Amazing what we have here. But some of the property that we have, we need to hold on to as a district. Preschool programs may be coming really important in this community. And if so, we need to be ready to serve. We need our buildings. Talked about Shawnee Park. Shawnee Park, I would ask that you would close that building. Built for six hundred. We have two hundred and twenty students enrolled. Thirteen percent of the students in that school live in the area. We bus children, the other hundred and eighty in, I would ask that we close that. Straight. I would ask that we close that building, move those preschool programs in a school so students can become a part of that school. Weller Wood. I would ask that we move those programs, the program at Weller Wood and West Leonard CDC to either campus or Ken O'Shea. to either campus or Kenosha. The Grove. I've talked about the IB Program. That would be in Phase Two. We don't have enough time to really roll that program out in the fall. But I would ask that we start right away preparing for the program. I would ask for a secondary study. Starting in January. And that is to redesign secondary schools. Southwest Community Campus. We have the Spanish Immersion Program that is pre-K or K through eight. At some point, we will need to invest in a high school, an immersion high school on the southwest side of town. I would ask that you would consider building a small high school for an immersion program on the southwest side of town. CA Frost. Again, we have a program around the environment and a science, and yet, the program is K through eight. I would ask that you would consider building a small high school so that we have a pre-K through 12 program. Zoo School. A really cool school. We have students on the waitlist who will love that program. Parents and students love program-based educational opportunities. So the zoo school, I would ask that you expand that. Instead of 60 students, that we will take 180 students. The same with Blandford. I would ask that you consider expanding that program for Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth. And the Public Museum. Again, a place-based program. I would ask that you consider a partnership with the Public Museum. So our students can study right on site. I would ask that we look at the future of Union, Alger, Riverside, Westwood, all in the study that starts, would start in January. And then the last one is that we explore all options. Study in the next year. Including partnering and creating district-sponsored charters. We have the Child Discovery Center. We have done it in the past. And I would just ask that we consider all options as we move forward in this study for next year. I have very specific numbers for you. I have the chart here to show you any of the numbers to ask questions. I will ask that you push, ask the questions, and I know that you will. I respect that with you as a board, and I have shared across this city. You are faced with a very, very difficult decision. And I know each and every one of you, I know that you will not take this lightly. But over the next six or seven weeks, I will give you all the information you need. Research any of your questions to provide you with the data so you can make the best possible choice. This plan, we look to save about $5 million. I would ask that you allow us to put half away and reinvest half over the next few years. Over the next five weeks, I have community meetings scheduled. I'm available. Including Saturdays. I have to go to church on Sunday. I see my pastor is here. After eight o'clock service. I am available. But I want to make sure that the voices are heard. Again, this is my best thinking, the best thinking of my cabinet, the best thinking of about 100 community groups. And even though everyone has shared, this makes sense. It's the right thing to do. People are very emotional about their schools. And I get that. As I've said, there's probably not a person in this room who loves Grand Rapids Public Schools more than me. I also get being really close, so close to your school. Every school I've ever attended, other than Grand Valley and Western, has either closed or been renamed. Maybe something about me. But I get that this is really, really hard. But in order for us to move forward as a district, we have no other choice. It costs about $9 million to operate this district every month. Nine million. What we don't have in common with most of the districts in middle cities, we've been a partner, membership, had a membership in middle cities for, I've been here 38 years, so. But we've always been included in middle cities. Probably 90% of those districts, you guys, are operating in the negative, not on my watch. I will not allow us to do that. So I beg you to make those hard choices now. But stay focused on children. And remove everything that's connected to an adult out of this decision and do what we know is right. For every child in every classroom in this entire district. I am open for questions. I welcome your questions. Again, this is my best thinking. I'm sure there's something that we've missed.
Superintendent Neil, we, the way we have it scheduled for tonight because of the time of the meeting, because we were starting at 4:30 and probably possibly ending close to 8:30. We did schedule a break in between. We had it scheduled for six. But it's my understanding that dinner was supposed to arrive at this time, and I think this is a good time to break before we start into a conversation and then it'll be more difficult to stop a conversation to try and take a break. So if no one has a problem with that, I think this will be a good time for us to have the break and then reconvene in 20 minutes still. We'll still keep it to 20 minutes. Any issue with that?
I'm not sure. Somebody just saw someone leave. They had it scheduled to arrive at 5:30, so it looks like Julie.
But thank you for the thorough presentation and we'll go from there. Thank you very much.
Superintendent Neil is going to have members of her team to join this discussion as we open up for questions and answers from the members of the Board of Education regarding the plan. So if you want to call out who you would like, that would be great, and then we can get started with questions.
They're all looking like, please don't call me.
If you're looking like that, then it's you. Julie, come on up.
Julie, I would ask that you come up, Julie, so we can talk about finances. And John Hemhold, I would ask that you come up first. Ken. They're looking for some help here. Ken from Operations, I would also ask that you join the team. Thank you.
Sue, do you want Julie then to open up with
to the budget sheet that you have?
Well, I guess, when I look at the budget sheet, it's in lump sums as opposed to specific to buildings. So I don't know what questions we could ask on those besides what are the specific numbers to the building, and if you have that as a handout, that's something that we could all possibly get.
I do. I'm going to ask someone to copy. Dana. We did, we did break the budget down. Madam President, based on each location.
Okay. So while she's getting that copied, if there aren't any other specific questions to finance, why don't we just open up the floor so that the board can start asking whatever questions they have? I see Mo is already on the list. Okay, I'll just put everybody's name. I'll just go this way, and then we'll go from there.
I'm wondering if we should organize it around schools.
Doesn't matter to us. We can take it anyway.
Doesn't matter. Yeah.
Okay. So are we going to each do our whole list out?
Nope, I think what we'll What we will do is, is we'll just give everyone an opportunity maybe to ask two questions and then just keep rotating. And then if you don't have any questions, don't worry about it. Okay? So we'll start with Mr. Ross and then just go around like that and just keep doing that, fielding it that way, two questions each.
Before we start, I would like to just let members of my team know that anything that we do not have the answers for, we will get the information and come back. We did try to anticipate some of the questions based on the presentation, so we may have the information here. We may have to get back.
Mr. Ross.
Only question I have right now was, looking at the proposed plan, it's definitely a push for increasing the K through eights. And I might not say I have a problem with that, but I'm just curious to know if we can get some information on performance when you compare students that are currently K through five and K through five environments versus those in K through eight environments. And then obviously students that are Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth in standalone middle schools versus those in K through eight middle schools.
Good question. Do you have any immediate responses, or is that something you'd probably want to put something together?
I want to take, share some information. We know in this district, parents tend to want K eights. People are very comfortable with K eights, and we do those well, and we have a history of K eights. They're small, very quaint. On average, we have about 60 students in our K eights programs.
60 per middle school grades?
Per grade.
Okay.
Whereas in our comprehensive middle schools, they're larger. And people tend not to select those. But in speaking with Paul Helder on Friday, I understand for K eights, we really need to work with our union members to define what is the best way to staff those. So it is not without areas that we need to look at. Okay?
Compared to some of the middle schools too, if you look at the schools that have been on the 5% list or on the SIG list, Alger, Westwood, Ford, Riverside was not on there, but Riverside has struggled academically. And it's notable that, to my knowledge, there's no K eights on there. In fact, many of the K eights, like Frost, Southwest Community Campus, MLK, have had relatively strong academic performance, but obviously we can crunch those numbers and get them. So you can see from an AYP standpoint, from an Ed Yes report standpoint, MEAT scores, all the above. Thank you.
Can I add one thing to that? I think it'd be interesting to check out where we lose kids. Often it's between sixth grade and middle school when it's a comprehensive, when it's a big middle school. I think that's true.
That is correct.
So you may want to check that.
I would add to that. That's the other part, is if you look at from a pure enrollment, the K eights have a tendency to hold the numbers. Almost every one of our K eights is packed full right now. In fact, that's where what this plan starts to look at, a Frost and a Southwest, because they're strong academically and strong enrollment, retaining and attracting families. This plan says, let's take what we're doing well and invest in it. Let's expand it. Let's replicate it. And so that, just that alone, that families are more comfortable with K eights, they have a track record of success. But we can certainly demonstrate the growth or loss of enrollment comparing K eights and middle schools.
And whoever's taking notes about the information that's being requested, at the end of the meeting, I'll have you recap, so take them good. That's my warning. Marie?
Yes, I go to one, a big one, Creston High School. I'm concerned that that is Goodside High School in the Northeast Stand. I know we've lost students in all of our high schools. I'm concerned about that, given that it had the highest gains in ACT that we saw earlier. That seems to be, if that's successful. So I guess my question there is, are we looking at that because of low enrollment, I understand, but is also the condition of the building? Is that what's weighing in on that financially? It might be costly to fix that building?
Costly, but not the state of the building. The building is in very good condition. And so it is because of the cost for operating the building and low enrollment. It costs about 1.5 million dollars for operations for Creston High School.
Is it a lower enrollment than Ottawa?
Yes. It is.
My concern is that we may lose whatever white students that we have in the district right now if we close Creston, and that's just a question that I would have to look at very carefully. My second question is Blandford Nature Center. I'm not sure that if you doubled that number, that you would have an environmental issue that would not be welcomed at that site. That may be too many kids for that kind of a program. I would just ask that you check with the Blandford people and see where that is. I know I've heard that from Dr. Dockery. That they're pretty much where they should be with kids, and to double that may be a problem. Don't know that, but that's a question. Thank you.
Can I move up on the Blandford question? As we talked about, expansion of Blandford, expansion of zoo, the potential to partner with the Public Museum, it seems that are we talking, expanding the sixth grade program, or are we talking, leaving the size of the sixth grade program as it sits? And expanding the program to Seventh, Eighth, Ninth, or Fifth? Because to me, it seems if we continue to expand it at the sixth grade level, we will have, kind of deteriorating the majority of our sixth grade programs across the city, or to me, it may make more sense to grow the programs year over year.
Well, Blandford was doubling the sixth grade from 60 to 120, and then zoo was Six, Seventh, and Eighth.
Clarify that. Thank you.
And I'd just pick up on that. First of all, you know, the new Blandford school that's been built right now, it was, while we're building it for the, to serve the 60, it was designed to accommodate twice that. Now, we, obviously, we're not building it that way, but in discussions with Weggie Foundation, with Blandford Nature Center, they were aware of that design, and yes, that we did get some of that feedback, so certainly we need to be sensitive to that. And that would also apply if CA Frost went to Nine through 12 on a very close to the site. So those are factors that do come into account. But that's also part of what the Phase Two part says, we need to study these things. Let's think them through. At a meeting we've met with the county and the Zoo Society, their master plan looks at expanding educational opportunities, but that's owned by the county. And so that'd be another dynamic that would say, what can they sustain on that, that's a pretty relatively small, mid-sized zoo. And so that's again, why, in theory, it may sound like a good idea to expand and duplicate and invest. But once you study it, determine it, work with the stakeholders, that's when we then determine whether or not it's a smart bet or not.
Just add something to that. I, yeah, that's a very, that's my immediate response to it, because I think part of what makes those programs dynamic is the powerful sense of community those children have. And so I think that cohort of 60 is what is like sort of maximum for that, so if it's spread out over many years, multiple years, that would be my concern as well, so.
I just want to weigh in if that's how we're going to do this, because we do have a competing program in Forest Hills called Good Willie, and it is more than sixth grade, and they do have more than 60 kids, and I believe that they're attaining that same community feel. I understand the trepidation, but
Is there one grade more than 60, though? I know it's three years.
They have Six, Seventh, and Eighth, so it's how you expand, I think.
Right, but in the one year, how big is it? I mean, my neighbor, my cottage work teacher's there. I think it's still only about 60. Yeah, I still think the cohorts are only about 60.
It would be interesting, though, to find out what the people in Blandford, not the school, Blandford Nature Center itself feels about it. They don't have a problem with that, that's fine. And I'm kind of carrying a banner for a relative there. It would be Dr. Dockery. Dr. Dockery. So.
Jane?
Okay, um, so I, one of the questions I have is along this K eight theme again. What are the differences in specials for, for the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in a K eight versus a middle school? Cause I know there are differences, but I don't know what they are.
Currently, there are differences, and that's where we would work with GREA to decide not only the certification, but which programs. Because part of the, the concern that, um, members have shared with me is we may have two teachers or four teachers and they switch. When it comes to prep time and some other issues, we don't have enough people to do that. So we would have to carefully design that program.
And I was thinking about things like music and, um, band orchestra.
And they still, they still have their specials, but what they don't have is a comprehensive middle school. So they would not have all the same offerings as a comprehensive middle school.
Like sports and those other things.
Sports and, um, could be banned.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
But they're, in the K eights, they're in the same classroom for the entire day, you know, with the exception of going out or whatever.
That's correct.
Art or whatever. But in the middle school, then they would change classes six times a day.
Yep.
Um, okay, so.
That was one.
Go ahead, Jane.
The other question is with all the expansion of K eights, and I know that you have re-exploring Westwood and Riverside on your plan, um, do we have a, do we have a guesstimate as to how much, um, how many people will flow to the K eights versus those middle schools if we do open more K eights?
This current plan will allow for, um, one, parents and students to make a choice. But if every child, if we fill every section in the K eights, Riverside could fit into Westwood.
Yep. Thank you.
So, um, my first question will be regarding the, the ten schools on the lowest five percent list, or the lowest performing list or whatever. So when I look at this list, only two of them are closing. Yet, we're closing, how many schools? Fifteen?
Ten.
Ten. So, you know, my mind says, why not, if you're looking to close schools, why not look at closing the schools that are being threatened to be taken over, um, and, you know, and all these other things that, that are on this list. And so, you know, and there may be other schools that you may need to close in addition to, but, so why not just do that, do a blanket closure or out of those schools?
Part of, uh, the decision in deciding which schools to close was not only based on academic achievement. That's the first thing. That was a factor. Um, the second is even though, uh, some of the schools on the lowest five percent, um, are on there for not closing the achievement gap for two or three years, some of them are also new buildings. They are also located in communities that, um, we need our schools in. And so it isn't so easy as to just close based on academic achievement. When you look at a Kent Hills, Kent Hills is a new building. We need to keep that on the list. Now, we will meet the federal guidelines for this program, which would include, um, if a principal has been in the building more than, uh, two years, since two thousand and ten, we will remove those principals. And those principals will not be allowed to go to another school that is on the list. That's the federal guidelines. The other is, um, in two of the schools, we don't have room anywhere in the city for those children. Union has approximately thirteen, twelve hundred students.
Mm-hmm.
Almost thirteen. We don't have a, currently, we don't have a location to put them in. The same with Westwood, almost six hundred students. And so if we close those two alone, that's eighteen hundred students. And, um, not that we will not do something with them. We could, uh, blend and become one campus, a six through eight in one building, and then a high school, but create a new school. Right? And so that would then essentially remove the school code. When you look at, um, some of the other schools on the list, Mueller Park.
Mm-hmm.
To close Mueller Park and remove that school from that neighborhood is not the answer. Brookside, Brookside is another one on the list. We own twenty-five acres of land on the corner of Madison. And we have three hundred and fifty students. We are using that building as part of the, um, programs for Caesar Chavez and Southwest Community Campus, Burton and Buchanan. Those schools are at capacity. And so we have now increased the enrollment at Brookside by about seventy students this year. And so, um, unfortunately, it doesn't just equate to close one because it's on the list. It really is to close it, rebuild it, and repurpose those programs and reinvent.
Great question. Okay.
Fair question.
The second one is the preschool university, um, on Kenosha's campus. How many students with, with the closure of, um, was it Ridge Moore and those other, um, CDCs? How many students do you anticipate, you know, being at that camp, at, at preschool university? And would you consider having all preschools from other s- individual schools at that university as well? Um, and would that be a cost savings or not if we consolidated almost all preschools?
Currently, the Kenosha building, not the Van Alken, Kenosha building has sixteen classrooms. And so the program at Kenosha will hold sixteen classrooms. Now, a classroom may be defined differently than what we know because a classroom could be a room for two children. It depends on the program. It depends on, um, the identified needs of those students and, um, or it could be five students in a classroom. So what we know as a typical classroom, fitting thirty-six students in a room, doesn't, it doesn't equate that way, but we have sixteen rooms. The other question is, would it help us to move all of the preschool programs into one? And that answer is no. We know, when we built these schools, we built them to have our preschool programs in the building. What we have learned in this district is if we can offer preschool in a building, children tend to be a part of that building. They become a part of that program and they stay. It is my hope in the future, we can move as many preschool programs as possible in the community. Currently, we have two preschool programs from Caesar Chavez. We have them located at Straight Elementary on the other side of town. Those programs will be moved to Brookside Elementary closer to home. Children need to go to school in their neighborhood, especially preschool. They can attend school with their siblings and so forth. Those programs where we have room. Two classrooms at Sibley, we have room for, um, two classrooms at Brookside and a couple of other locations, we can move some of the preschool programs there. We also anticipate that we will get additional preschool slots and we wanna be able to serve those children as well.
Okay. Tony?
Okay, see if I can, uh, turn these into, um, separate questions. I, um, basically, I like to, I think that there's a lot of, uh, stuff around the K eights. And I like to see the numbers and maybe you know the numbers off the top of your head. But for instance, I'm trying to do the math on some of these. So for instance, um, Dickinson, if we turn it into a PK to eight. And we have Alger as a middle school. How do the numbers work with that? And then also very similar to that. So in general, I'm just interested in how the numbers stack up, especially like we've mentioned, if we're, we're expanding these other programs like the idea of zoo in Blandford. Same with, um, uh, stocking, kind of an opposite question though, was stocking as a K five, if the area schools are K eights, then where do the six, seven, and eight go when they leave stocking? And so what are, so what are those kinds of plans? So if that's, I wanna count that as one question.
All right. That'll count as one. I'll count it as one answer. That's okay. I think I tracked you.
These questions are gonna get really long.
I got it. The first question you asked is around K eights in the southeast side of town. Again, parents tend to choose K eights. Um, with a closing of Ford, that would, um, increase the number of slots at Alger by two hundred. Alger was built for five hundred and ninety-seven students, and we have a couple hundred, a little over a couple hundred. So that would allow those students that choose to go to Alger, fill that building to capacity. We also would increase the number of K eights in the district for parents to choose that. And this really long question, I'm gonna jump to stocking now.
Okay.
Stocking as a K five and building that up. Remember Harrison is currently a K eight. That would remain. We have also other K eights we are proposing on that side of town, as well as Westwood is a middle school, comprehensive middle school for that side of town. So.
So the idea, okay. All right. So actually, if the, um, if we just get those numbers to kinda just, to map it out, so just to kinda, I think that it'll help visualize.
Absolutely.
And the second question is also connected to that. Um, the North Park Montessori, changing that to, uh, pre-K to eight. Um, the Montessori, the, the middle Montessori program is being seen as, um, really being revitalized right now. And so I just would like to, and I, and it's, and people are really excited about it, including me. And, um, I think that I wanna kinda get a sense that if we have, part of that is because there's North Park families that are leaving, that are getting out and they're going over to the middle school. And I would hate to see that become a dilution of that program. So I wanna see that the numbers would be effective for two Montessori middle schools.
And currently, twenty-five percent of the students are from North Park Montessori that are in the Grand Rapids Montessori. And so it is our hope that we would attract students because we have, um, reinvested the fifty thousand dollars a year for the next five years for Montessori training. And so it is our hope and our belief that we will increase the number of students. Right now, quite a few students leave and go to Kenowa, Northview. And so we are hoping that with a K eight, we will attract and hold on to our children and they not leave the district.
And then those kids will go to the-
Montessori High. That's correct.
And by doing that, you're creating a two K eights feeding a high school. Right now, in Montessori, as part of the whole Montessori plan, has been looking at how to strengthen the running numbers in order to maintain purity at the high school. Right now, we don't have enough kids to, to do what's necessary. That would help feed into the growth of that high school.
Okay, so we need two middle schools to feed the high school and we, and, and we feel like we can get the numbers for two middle schools. Okay, that's.
We hope that we will attract students. We are go- this entire plan, we are going to recruit and market, and we are going to be very aggressive in getting our students back. We believe that we should become the choice for this area. And by doing this plan, we will reinvest our dollars so that again, every classroom is top-notch. So the other part of this is we will be very aggressive in going after our children.
Wendy?
First of all, I guess I, I, I wanna say I'm really excited about some of this. Um, some of it is, some of it is stressful and troubling and concerning, but, um, I wanna express, um, how pleased I am to see that this isn't just a reactive plan, but a long-term vision plan. And it's clearly, to me, it seems clearly composed from deep receptivity. Not a few people, but out of sifting and sifting through a lot of voices and a lot of things, and I'm very appreciative of it. Um, two questions right now. The first one is regarding the reinvestment in the neighborhood school concept, and there are a few schools on that list. Um, we've heard some about, um, the East Hills neighborhood and what they're doing in Congress, but what will we do specifically? And I'm thinking some of these schools are in the bottom five percent too that we are looking at to reinvest as a neighborhood school. So what are we going to do with Aberdeen and, um, Mueller and Kent Hills? Is that really, is that? Neighborhood. Neighborhood school. Um, and, uh, Sherwood, that's gonna be, that's gonna be, yeah. So what are we going to do to engage those neighborhoods and reinvigorate? Some of these schools are low-performing schools. Bring them up and engage the neighborhoods in a new way.
The first thing I would like to say is parents do want what's best for their children. We need to go and ask them. There are members in this community that we need to engage in the conversation and listen. People have a right to self-direct. And I think if we ask them, explain the situation, allow them to ask the questions, pushback, we will attract families back. I do believe that we are working, um, in the right direction to close this achievement gap, even for those schools that are on the lowest five percent. We're working with many of our stakeholders to help define and create the neighborhood schools. I am not the person to sit in a room and create what a neighborhood school should look like. I believe in going to the people. Let them have a voice. I can come up with a plan. I've researched and read everything I can get my hands on. But again, we need to go to the neighborhoods and ask them. An example is Dickinson Elementary, Seas of Promise. They are working with two thousand families in that community, and I say let's go and ask to partner with Seas of Promise and recreate that neighborhood.
Second question, um, I think one of the biggest concerns regarding school closures is destabilizing the neighborhoods around them. Um, and I, I know that you've done the enroll, you've looked at the enrollment data on all the schools that we're going to close. Specifically, I wanna focus on the closure of Creston and, um, you've mentioned that the STEM, a significant portion of the students come, are in the STEM program, which will be moved to Central High School. A certain portion of those students are in the Ottawa Hills attendance area and a certain portion are in the Creston attendance area. So I guess related to that, for those students that are attending Creston and are not in Ottawa Hills, why is that? Um, and there may be varied answers. How are we going to get to why that is and, you know, whether Ottawa Hills will be an option for them? And for those that are in the Creston attendance neighborhood, um, how are we gonna meet the needs of those families and, um, ensure that we are not destabilizing the Creston attendance area?
Creston is probably the hardest one on this list for me. Um, but I think we need to ask the question. We need to ask, why are children not choosing Creston?
I know that answer.
Now, what we can do is survey the students that live in the area. Julie, will you go to that map? Cause I wanna see how many children live in the Creston area. We can focus-
Way to Northview.
Right. That's right, Mo. We can focus in on the students that live in that attendance area and ask the question. I don't know that answer. That's one. Julie?
All right. So at Creston, we have forty-four percent of the students are attending the school that are from that area.
And we don't know where the- Forty-four percent.
Say that again. Forty-four percent attend-
Attending Creston from that area.
From the Creston area.
Forty-four percent of the six hundred kids that are in that building on the northeast side.
Okay.
So. But we don't have the other number.
We don't-
In that attendance area.
Two hundred. Two hundred students are in the Grab Set program.
Right. But are they, do they overlap?
Yes.
Are some of those-
Yes. Yes.
Some of those three hundred kids are also Grab Set.
What we can do is survey the children, the students, the families in that area and find out why they're not choosing. I don't know that.
Does this chart also give you the number of students who would be eligible to attend a high school? So how many, how many kids who are high school eligible?
In that area. We have, uh, the students that live in that area.
District.
So at Creston, number of students who live in the Creston attendance area and are attending a GRPS school, so maybe not Creston, maybe attending another one of our high schools, eight hundred and seven.
I wanna know how many of them.
But it doesn't say how many-
Are living there that may be going someplace else.
Attending to a public or a charter or something along those lines.
But we can get those, we can get those numbers for you.
And I would, I would like to know too, if we can, how many of those kids went to Northview Public Schools and into charters?
That's right.
Uh, because when we closed down a number of Northeast and Elementary Schools, Hill Crest comes to mind, uh, and Riverside L, we lost a number of those kids to Northview and to, um, charters. That's my thinking. Now, I don't know. I, I'd like to see that, to know if that's true. Might not be true.
And we can also survey to find out why they left.
Mm-hmm.
Well, another follow-up on that is it'd be nice to know if, if a significant number, what proportion of the Grab Set students are from that neighborhood? And the reason I'm asking that is to what extent are, are students choosing going to Creston and then choosing Grab Set because that's the best program that they like at, at Creston? In other words, would they necess- and would they be also likely to make the move to Central? In other words, would they necess, and would they be also likely to make the move to Central? Maybe they're just going to Creston and they like the Grab Set program better than the other programs at Creston. And they may not be willing to move, I'd like to be, I don't know how we can learn that, but it'd be an important thing to learn, because there, there may not be an automatic transfer, that they would just automatically move.
That's a great point.
One, I think the other question, if I can jump in Wendy on this Creston piece, 'cause I have quite a few questions actually regarding Creston. And it really doesn't have anything to do with me being a polar bear, as much as it has.
Two, two polar bears.
Yeah, as much as it has, you know, this is just, it's surprising that out of all of the high schools, this would be one. You have one that's been on the lowest five percent list forever, and, you know, out of all schools that we have on the docket, it's the one that could be taken over. So, you know, you have that one, then you have another one that's as empty as all get out. Um, and you have students who should be going to that one in Creston's building, and so my biggest concern is that that hundred fifty students, however many it is, where will they go? Obviously, they've chosen Creston for a reason, and if you close Creston, just like the Grab Set students may not necessarily go to, um, Central COI. Those kids definitely will not go to Ottawa Hills High School, because they've already made the decision not to attend Ottawa Hills. They've made a choice to go to Creston, so then, you know.
That was my question.
That's, that's huge, and I just think, you know, it's, it's a gamble, that's what it sounds like to me.
It's telling also that it was the highest ranking on the ACT scores.
Yeah, that's the other piece, yeah.
That means we've had a success, relatively successful program.
And the building is in great condition, so it's just all these factors that, you know, is weird that it's on the list.
You've got AI students there also, do you not?
And I, I totally agree, it is, um, for Creston, people have made the choice. And so we need to find out why, and we definitely can do that. And we can also find out, um, if not Creston, then what?
Right. You had two, right Wendy?
Ottawa Hills High School, the reinvest, reinvestment aspect of it, uh, we talked about repurposing it for to focus on partnerships with, um, with the HBCUs. Um, my question for that would be, what would those partnerships look like? You know, would it be like scholarships, opportunities, uh, tours, would those colleges or universities adopt those high schools, or what would that look like?
We have not totally defined that, it would include tours, it would also include their professors coming here. It would include, um, could include, um, teachers studying here, um, in the district as well.
Scholarship opportunities.
They have not offered any money, but I will absolutely go after money.
There could be dual enrollment.
Right.
Lots of, I mean, you know.
Is that possible with them being out of state?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Cause that could pull more students to Ottawa Hills, as you were talking about. Uh, I've got a few others, but let me juggle this around Union, well, back up. Southwest Community Campus, you talked about maybe having a small high school on the southwest side. And I know, uh, Union students, students on the southeast side are, are bussed over to, to Union, even though it's on the northwest side. And to me, it seems like the southeast side is closer to the southwest side, so if we have a small high school on the southwest side, how would this affect those southeast side students going to Union? Would some of them possibly come to the southwest?
They could, we believe in choice in this district, and what I would like to see happen in the future is children are able to, families are able to make selections on where they best see fit.
See, the only reason I asked that, sorry to cut you off, because Union, uh, we're talking about, let me get back to that slide. Union, we're talking about is recommitting, yeah, and, and investing in that. So if we're investing in that, and then we open up a small high school on the southwest side, those students will, like you said, have a choice. And after having that choice and they choose to go to southwest side, seems like that will kinda void out the reinvestment that we put in Union for those students on the southeast side that choose to go to southwest.
The Union, the, the Union, um, the turnaround model is strictly through, uh, the lowest five percent. We have to do something there. And we have almost thirteen hundred students at Union. And so to answer one of the questions earlier, to move those thirteen hundred students to either Creston or, um, Ottawa, it, there's a lack of space.
I think, I just wanna add to that, I think, um, part of the purpose of adding a small high school on the southwest side is to bring some of our students home. Um, we know that a number of our students are over in Godfrey Lee and Godwin, and that would be a, a way to attract our students back home.
They can literally walk down Granville, down the street, as opposed to get on the bus and go over the river and through the woods over to Union High School. So the con, the concept is there, that is such a densely pocketed neighborhood there, that the numbers would, could likely justify it. And again, that's why we need to study it to see if this makes sense, just like you study how many kids we're losing to Northview. How many are we losing to Wyoming, to Godfrey Lee, to Godwin, that are in that neighborhood? And if there was a high school option, would they choose it?
Can I, can I add to that? So, and this may be the same question that Kenny asked, but, so why are we looking at touching any of those schools that you're planning to do the study? You know, why not do nothing and then do this secondary school study and then make whatever changes you wanna make to those schools?
Absolutely, a great point, and we thought, we have discussed that as well. Do we hold still with all of the high schools? Do the study this next year and then move forward, so that is definitely an option.
Did you have two?
Yeah, I, I asked two, thank you.
Okay, John?
First of all, I just wanna say thank you for, uh, stocking elementary and reinvesting in a program that probably shouldn't have been closed down in the first place. It's, uh, you know, we talk of, you know, we've, we seem to have made a lot, big commitment in this plan to community and neighborhood schools, and we know that that was a successful neighborhood school, and I really just hope that we can recreate the, the culture that we had there, um, before it was closed, because there was many, many families and neighbors and community that was, that were very invested in that school, so thank you for that. My first question I guess is, uh, how do, how do we see this plan affecting our class size? Do we see that having a, a positive impact on number of students in classrooms, meaning we're gonna have less students per class, or?
The first thing I would like to do is to actually get the number of students and balance. We have some, uh, classes right now with seventeen, eighteen students, and we have some with thirty, thirty-five. It is very difficult, if not impossible, to offer classes when you don't have enough students. We have split classrooms, right, across this district. Part of that is because we don't have enough students in the buildings. We need to have solid sections with enough students to offer opportunities. So it is my hope that we also look at the number of students that we have in every classroom across this district and then create a balance.
Thank you. I guess my second question is back to the, uh, the Creston High topic here. Has there been any discussion regarding the potential move of, say, City High to the Creston site, knowing that, that Creston's in a, in a, the Creston neighborhood's been a great partner of GRPS, it's a prominent building and a prominent location. And City High seems, gets, gets a lot of praise as one of our more successful programs and maybe close to, uh, maxing out that building that they're in, with the potential to expand that program, not, in, in a cautious and safe manner to do it, do it correctly, but to maintain that culture, but build that program as something that has proven to attract kids to GRPS.
Actually, we've done a couple of things. The first, um, we have considered, um, moving City High from the current northeast building to Creston High School. We have about six hundred and ninety, seven hundred students at City High, including City Middle High, including, um, Economicology. Creston will house thirteen ninety-seven. We could almost double City Middle High right now. So that absolutely is an option, and one that I would like for you to consider. The other option we looked at and did not get traction from parents, uh, was creating a six through twelve program at Creston. People did not want their eleven-year-old in a high school, and so it just wasn't a good fit. But we did look at other ways to, to repurpose Creston.
When unlike Ottawa Hills, Creston doesn't have, Ottawa Hills is, is great to split that off, for what you're trying to do with the IB, but.
Creston doesn't have that type of building.
I can see that.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. O'Connor, were you asking, bring City to Creston's building and close traditional Creston too, or were you saying, keep traditional Creston and bring City High there?
I was saying just bring City High there.
Okay, and just, just, it, okay, I was just saying.
Maybe it could be some combination, I, I don't know the layout of the building, how the functionality would work.
Is that two for you?
That's two for me.
Okay.
Can I follow up a little bit on, uh, that one in terms of, uh, more of a follow-up statement? I know, um, when Dale Holmcamp was the principal at City, there was talk about scaffolding down, like they're gonna do with the GR Arts program, and have that be an IB, you know, pre-K through twelve. And this coming up, that would sort of make sense to do something like that. I don't know, um, if that was really ever a consideration or not, but I know that was brought, when I was on my little grounds committee, that was talked about.
Um, I have not been approached, nor have I given thought to a, an IB program, pre-K through twelve for City High. I'm not, never even considered it. IB is extremely expensive, and what I've asked the board to do is to commit to City High and invest the dollars in that IB program. So to do it pre-K through twelve and start another IB Arts.
Right.
We would run into a problem with comparability, in part because what you give to one child, you must also give to the other according to the federal guidelines. And for a City High school, it will take a much higher per pupil dollar amount for the IB program, so that is something that we will consider.
Yeah. So that wasn't my question, no.
Okay, Monica, your two.
Back to Ottawa Hills, uh, just for, I, I think, audience clarification as well, uh, because I, I think I know the answer to this. Uh, the historical black colleges and universities, um, so that everyone understands that people, uh, who are not considered black would benefit from going to Ottawa Hills and would benefit from Howard University. Something of that nature, that there is some relationship that would, if you could just, and the middle college, talking a little bit about that, how that dovetails with Ottawa Hills.
Absolutely, the historically black colleges and universities in the United States, there are many, hundreds, actually. And, um, they do accept and have students of our backgrounds. So that's one. And so we would ask to partner with, I actually have about seven that I've sent an invitation out, um, to include, but it is definitely for all students. The, the second part of the question is for those students that, um, would participate at Ottawa. We would open that up, again, we believe in choice, so we would like to open that up to students across the district, as we would the, uh, challenge scholarship for those students coming out of Union High School. And the same for, uh, the IB programs. We believe in allowing students to make a choice with any of the schools that we have, any of the high schools. Our students are on the, um, the transit, the rapid. And so it's not as if we provide transportation, so our students can get to any of the schools.
Can I follow up on that? I like that in terms of, you know, vouching for those models, I think that, um, you know, we talk about place-based education with Blandford and Zoo, and we can also have cultural-based education. And I think that having an education option that focuses on African-American culture, or one that focuses on Latin American or Latino culture, I think that, in terms of it, I mean, I think it, it serves two purposes. One is the, perhaps, using cultural identity to help students perform that are from that background, but also having the opportunity for, for students who are not. And so people are going out to Ada to do Spanish immersion programs, because they're interested in the cultural, uh, learnings that can take place there. And I think that we have to always see that what we're doing is providing these opportunities. Um, and certainly the relationship with the historically black colleges would do that, and I'm, I think that that's a very fantastic idea, we shouldn't apologize for it, so.
We kind of follow up on that, I think we have, I believe we still have the Native American, um, concentrated program, okay, are we moving that one?
Yes, that program would move from straight.
That's right.
But we would, again, look at, how do we reinvest and focus on that community? Because we need to get those students prepared, and currently, we are not doing that.
Follow, sorry, following up on that.
You have two?
Uh, yeah, um.
Or is this three?
Sounds like four.
Was payback, Stacks.
Yeah, I've got thick skin. Um, I, I'm gonna ask one that, uh, realizing that all of these things are still up for grabs. Everyone's gonna be asking tomorrow, are the lines drawn for the Grand Rapids East and Grand Rapids West sports teams already? So how are we parceling up the Creston, uh, football team and, um, track team, and where are those coaches, et cetera?
Great question. You know, truly, truly, you guys, I have not drawn a line in the sand on not one thing I've submitted to you. And the reason is, except for Grupa, Ed Park, we are going to tear that down. The building.
Do you hear that air to chill?
University Preparatory Academy is moving to Division Street. And after we move the last class. Once and for all, I'm, that I am asking for a strong vote.
You gonna let Mayor Loggie do the first swing at that?
Out of this entire plan, that is the only thing that I am truly, truly, um, committed to. And I think that as good neighbors and partners, we would be doing a disservice to that community to allow that building there, it doesn't fit.
Never has.
I don't live in that community, um, but when I drive by, I would, if I lived there, I would want you to tear it down. So that's the only thing that I am committed to. And as far as the lines in the sand about athletics, really not my area of expertise, but what I do know is we need to be competitive. I intend to win, I do intend to win, right?
Wow.
Right? And I think, no, I think that it's fair, when our children go out and compete, it's very difficult for them to compete in the OK Conference. We need to prepare them, we need to help students get there. For some of our children, that is the hook. That is the hook.
Absolutely.
I am committed to athletics, I am not committed to east and west, north and south, right? I was a South Trojan.
Amen.
A polar bear. But I'm not committed, I am committed to children. I'm committed to this community, and so I would ask members of this community to help us decide how best to do this. But make no mistakes, it's the right thing to do, to go to two teams as opposed to three.
Okay, so Monica needs to leave a little early, so I'm gonna give her another shot. I was thinking this all along, before she stole two extra questions, I'm just kidding. I was gonna give her one more time and then we'll come back around again.
Well, actually, a lot of mine were, um, I, can you clarify the, the, um, bit about the uniforms? Because it seems to me that some of that, uh, data regarding uniforms is controversial, whether it makes a difference or not in terms of academic achievement. It really is sort of based on sort of site and locale, et cetera, so.
Absolutely, the uniforms, it's not popular with the students, but I will tell you, the FBI, that's pretty official. They have done research on this and believe in urban districts, this is a way to go. Now, that's maybe their research, I'm not real sure, but I have a committee that's researching this. Because again, I don't think we can make decisions based on emotions, we are talking about the lives and the future of this district. And we need to be very intentional about every decision we make at this table. And so I don't take that lightly, but what I don't want to happen is for parents and students to get all focused wearing over a pair of two hundred dollar jeans.
I agree, I agree.
Doesn't take that to become educated.
Certainly a cost savings for parents.
Absolutely.
I loved him.
I, I had the privilege of being in Ottawa Hills a few weeks ago and, um, did an impromptu survey on uniforms. Mr. Lewis had to be my security, no, I'm just teasing, they actually, the kids, you know, immediately, they were saying, no, we don't want it, but after we had dialogue, you know, I think it just made sense to them, you know? And there was one student, it was funny, she was saying, I don't want anyone to look like me, and I said, well, the young lady sitting next to you has the same t-shirt on. And she goes, oh, she got on a jacket, she goes, oh, so then, you know, she realized she was dressed like someone sitting there saying she didn't want anyone dressed like her, so. I think, you know, with, with a lot of conversation and, and having dialogue with the students, I think they'll come around.
Absolutely.
With the uniforms piece, did you wanna piggyback on that?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to ha, I'd like to have a longer discussion about that, it's not just bringing them around. Like, what does it mean, does it mean that we tell students to wear white shirts and black pants? Or does it mean that we have a uniform company that we have to buy uniforms come? And I think that.
Argyle, Argyle.
It was piloted, it was piloted in the district for secondary schools a few years ago. And so each school, each high school had their own logo and, you know, different vests and shirts and all this type of stuff, and then you could just choose whatever you want. So you could create your own look through those uniforms. So each school, I would assume, would, would look a lot like what the pilot looked like, you know, a few years ago, where not every school would even look the same, although uniforms would be in every school.
Does MLK have uniforms now?
Actually, we have about seven schools right now, where students wear uniforms.
I guess, to the extent that, that we have a, that the board makes this call, I'd like to kind of see the data on the various things, and just to what extent does it really, I mean, does it, does it really accomplish, is, how much competition is there for the, for the clothes and stuff? I do realize that is, is an issue, but, you know, I mean, how are other ways that we address these issues? So I did visit, I mean, I've, I've been in some schools with uniforms and, and the kids didn't necessarily seem to always fit in them. I mean, so it's like, you know, really, are we trying to, you know, it's, you know, manage those, those uniforms? So I'd like to see, I'd like to see that.
I think some of that data you're talking about, Tony, was done when we first brought the uniforms to fruition, about five, six years ago, maybe a little longer. So some of that data is already there, we just have.
Yeah, you just wanna see it, yeah.
Then you might wanna see the latest dat, data on it.
You wanna see what?
The latest data.
Well, or even, or, you know, I mean, if it's changed, I mean, yeah, it may not have, but, you know, the schools districts are considering it, it'd be nice to read this.
Okay, Mr. Ross, anything?
Um, well, I was looking at some of these numbers, the financials, I guess, does WSD eligibility, that's Warm, Safe and Dry, is that what it is? Yes.
Yeah, exactly.
So now I was just looking at that, but, but regardless, on these financials, that last column, WSD, I guess could the Warm, Safe and Dry funds be used for that? But I guess we'll get to that in a bit, but, but one thing though, on your stability column with the three guiding values, central office reform, I'm sure that can obviously include a, a whole lot of different things, but I'm just curious on maybe what the initial vision is with some of that.
The central office, it does include a lot, it includes maintenance and operation, MIS and this campus, as well as several others. We need to align the work that we do in the district to serve buildings and students. And that will include reinventing central office, reviewing job descriptions, really looking at, what will it take to move this work forward?
Done. Marie?
Uh, yes, I had asked this question previously, but I do wanna discuss it because in moving Shawnee Park, we have a significant hearing impaired program there that's been very highly considered, or our oral deaf program is there. And I know we're moving it to Kenosha, I'm assuming we're just moving the preschool to Kenosha, not the elementary. And the elementary, I'm assuming, will go to Sherwood.
May or may not, Terris C. Tama asks that you come forward to talk about the special ed plan, but Ms. Slade, that would not be the answer, is not just for the preschool program, the move.
Oh, it is not just for the preschool? But if you're moving all the Kenosha Elementary to Sherwood, you can't leave Elementary HI. Are there any Elementary HI kids left? They can't go to a, to a school without any regular help.
You have someone here at the table, in Mr. Columbus, who's been very engaged in this conversation, thank you very much, Ken. You're right, we certainly would not move Elementary HI students into a preschool setting. We have three classrooms that we would need to find locations for, and when I say find, I'm, I'm not saying that glibly, we would be very thoughtful depending on the whole transformation plan. Because of cochlear implants, we do tend to send HI students back to their home districts or home neighborhoods by the end of their elementary years. We would, we are looking at like five or six different sites where we would keep that continuum of the oral deaf classrooms together. Sherwood would not be an ideal situation because of the open classrooms. And so that's not an option for us to consider. We also, you haven't asked, but what about the physically impaired classrooms that we currently have at Kenosha? Again, we would maybe try and group our HI and our PI together in one of our elementary schools, or perhaps the PI could go with the Kenosha neighborhood children over to Sherwood. So those are some things that are undefined, and we would welcome input.
You know that you'll receive it.
I don't think you'll be shy, right?
Never shy, here. I'm okay with the Oakley-Meiffield thing, are we having any, and that's, that's an ISD program, I mean, we operate for the ISD, and I don't think there'd be a problem with putting those kids together, because it's a nice facility. Glad you're not gonna move it to the East Beltline, but I, I just, I had questions on that move, because that is a pretty volatile population, can be. And it may sound like very few kids, but not if you're involved in the program, it's a lot of kids. I mean, there's a lot of kids with some pretty serious issues in one setting, so I'm assuming that you think this is gonna work well.
We do, we are thinking that it's going to work well.
I think better than moving them to the Beltline.
By all means, yes, yes, and like, as you indicated, the Oakley building is a shelter, in a sheltered area, and it has, it's in a T formation, so one can be the elementary wing, and the other can be our middle school wing, with, with shared spaces.
The only other question I have, I don't think is necessarily, I have your number, so.
Can I be excused?
Is a question about Hispanic and Latino community population and the input into what we should be doing, you know, to, to better assist that group. I know that most of them are, the high school wise, are at Union, I think at, at Westwood. And I know there's concern by that community about having them be there, and so perhaps a small high school will, will help that in the Southwest Center. But I'm, but I'm, I want us to focus on that population too, to make sure that we're really listening to that group, I, I'm sure that you have. But I wanna raise that to make sure that we, we get input from those families as to what, what works best for their cuts and the newcomer program, which is involved in that, I'm assuming, is that going to remain at Union?
I would look to move the newcomers program from Union High School, but in doing so, would ask the leaders of that community to make a recommendation. We actually met with about 15 to 20 leaders from the Hispanic community, and they were pleased with the plan and thought that we were being, doing the best thing for our students. And we will work together to create the nuts and bolts behind this plan, but they were all on board, thank you.
What's the newcomers plan, program?
It's, it's for newcomers into the country.
Oh, okay.
From all over the world.
Okay.
Refugees and fuel, and that's located at Union, I don't know how many kids are there, I think you two just visited that not too long ago.
There were, yeah, at least a classroom, and they're not all from, they're not all from Latin America.
No, I said they're from all over the world, yeah. Yeah, they're from all over the world.
We actually have students that represent 50 countries and speak 70 languages in this district. And the newcomers program is a home for any of our students that feel that that is the best place, but we would look to place them in a different community.
Just a quick follow-up then, I know there has been discussion too in the Latina community about moving kids from Burton all the way over to Union when Ottawa is down the street. So I know that that's an issue out there too, that we need to think about.
We did ask that question, right? And, you know, we have, in this community, again, I said that we were gonna look at the historical perspective of what we have done. And we have moved students from Central to Union, and now to turn around and say, well, you again, now move to Ottawa. It didn't feel right, in my soul, I couldn't do that.
Thank you.
Jane?
Okay, there's a lot of theme schools and special programs that require specific professional development for our teachers, which is a very, very significant investment. And my concern is, how can we assure with our Union compatriots that we can keep those teachers that we have invested a great deal PD and, in those programs, like IB, Montessori, CA-FRAS with the, with the science theme, there, you know, there, there's a different kind of investment.
That's a great question.
That I think we need to preserve.
Actually, I think that's a very, very fair question. It is very difficult to train staff members and then have them either bid out or bumped out or whatever. And so I've met with Pa, the leader, the GRA president, and he understands, he gets that. And so depending on what the vote is, Paul and I are both going to work together in order to create the best possible plan for this district.
Similar, along the same lines as you had asked us to consider an IB coordinator at City, is it safe to assume that IB coordinator would also be leveraged for the other IB program in the, in the future?
Absolutely, the IB coordinator, not only the coordinator, but the principals will work together, the teachers will work together, because there is something to be said about a new program starting and continuing. We also will partner with Grand Valley State University and possibly use this as a learning lab. You know, in order to be trained in IB, you travel around the country, actually out of the country even, we have many people that travel out. And so Grand Valley has agreed to partner with us to train and become a lab. And so we will benefit at City as well as the new IB symphony program.
Just, this is not a third question, this is a continuation of the last question. So along those.
None of us believe you.
You started it.
But we're all doing it, so.
Along those same lines with our partnership with Grand Valley, are there opportunities to leverage Grand Valley for other programs like Montessori as a lab, classroom as well? Because mo, many of those programs require our teachers to travel outside of the state for education, and I think there's huge value in bringing our own kids through programs like Grand Valley to actually end up being teachers in our district. And there's nothing better than a Montessori teacher or an IB teacher that actually was a Montessori or IB student.
You know, I will say, really, we need to tip our hat to the universities in this area. We have partnered with Ferris State University, they're at the table. We're actually starting a new program at, at our Centers of Innovation. We have partnered with Grand Rapids Community College, Michigan State, Grand Valley, and now Howard. They have truly answered every request that I've made of them, they're here. And so I think we just have to describe and define what it is that we want them to do. Part of the concern that we've had in the district is, we have chosen not to ask people. I've said publicly, and I will say again, I happen to be the person sitting in this seat, but I will go to this community to educate children.
Well, I have more, but I'll wait until my next turn.
What is the projected capacity of Central High COI, once they're all there? And, you know, how, what's the capacity of the school, you know, what, what you hold? And then what would those numbers be? And then the other piece is, what are the renovation costs connected to? And I'm looking at this sheet to see if it's on here, because if it is, I can find it. To get, I know Central needs some work, so, to make Central prepared for those students. Because I trip down those stairs almost every time I go to Central.
Couple of questions. The first one is, the capacity of Central High is about 1,400 students. The, moving the COIs to Central is about 700, so we could double. And the cost of the renovation for Central is a million dollars in nips and tucks, per se. And it sounds like a lot of money, but in the grand scheme of things, you guys, it isn't. But when you hear it is not.
Is it Warm, Safe and Dry dollars?
It is.
Okay.
Not, not totally.
Not totally?
Because we can't pay for our drapes, we need drapes, curtains, $5,000.
Window treat.
Window treatments. I would like drapes.
14, 700, so the 700.
Come from a home decorating family.
Does the 700 include the Montessori as well?
That's correct.
Okay.
There's 37 Montessori high school students right now, and that would include room for that program to grow. And the other is the steps, I said the same thing, someone said those stairs are over 100 years old and we can't touch them, but they're beautiful. I went over there the other day, actually, Ken can respond.
We get them so that they can, so we can level them off, that's why I want, I love the wood.
The dip is a tradition now.
It's part of it.
I just gotta say, when I first came on, Arnie Smith Alexander said, whatever you do, don't touch those stairs.
You need to wear different shoes at, at Central, that's all, okay.
Just to come, the Warm, Safe and Dry, I mean, we're looking at very closely what we can use it for, there are certain restrictions. We can't buy window treatments, or we can't do painting, we can't do ceilings, we can't do floors, we can't do lights. So we're trying to work out, what, what could we do and spend that money on? What would we have to do with our own staff and try and make this work? Now, if we tore a wall down, we can do a whole lot, it, it gets a little complicated. We'll, we will, we will come back after the transformation plan is reviewed and accepted to the Finance Committee with a revised Warm, Safe and Dry program with priorities for them to review and give direction on.
Okay, that's a good segue to another, my second question. I was looking, and I wanted to know, what's the total cost of the Warm, Safe and Dry eligible renovations? I see the numbers, you know, individually, but I don't know what the total cost. And, so, I don't know if you have that handy, if not, then I can do the math at some other time.
Of, of the changes that we proposed?
Yeah, whatever I have in front of me.
Yes.
The, these sheets, they have a column for Warm, Safe and Dry. The no lines eligible to.
217,000 IB.
Yeah, see, that's the thing, these numbers, all of this isn't Warm, Safe and Dry eligible, so that's why I was asking.
I'd rather we, it, it's over a million, but we'd rather go back through and give you the correct number accurately.
Okay, that's fine. Tony?
I'm sorry, I'll be quiet and let my staff.
No, 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 this is like amazing, yes, well, there's 217 students here. Gee, and they got, they got, they got. But you don't need them. I'd be careful with that central office restructuring.
She's been eating and sleeping this land, that's what it is.
She could tell you the number of kids.
Be careful with that.
This is very personal to me.
I meant that as a compliment.
That's right, absolutely.
To make your staff work, but anyways, very, very impressive. I think Dennis has heard her sleep talking like all week, the plane.
And praying.
Messiah Missionary Baptist Church.
They prayed for me as well.
They know how many students are in this building.
Pastor Rose did let me have the mic yesterday.
All right, so anyway, I know that this has been a lot, I, two questions, one is, and I'm trying to make it an actual question, just two actual questions.
Let's raise your question.
And that, we didn't, I don't remember spending much time on that. So if, just if you could discuss this, because it's been something I've been concerned about, the changes that we've done to alternative ed since I got here, so.
I can. I have been very public about the alternative education program that we offer in the district. I don't think it is in the best interest of the students right now to have students sitting in front of a computer. I do believe that children need to be taught. I think we need to build the best program that we can. We need to connect those children with jobs in this community and look at true opportunities for those students. And I don't think we're there. The fact that we have Pinnacle at Union, Creston, Ottawa, and Central, instead of bringing those children in the fold and doing right, I think it's the wrong thing to do. So I would ask that you allow me to reinvest in the alternative ed program. And I don't know what the best program is, I really don't. Everyone claims that they know how to do this. I've researched it. But I think in order to do right by our children in this community, we need to know. But the answer is not a point four of a teacher, and then you sit on a computer. It's an accident waiting to happen.
Yeah, I agree. You know, I mean, this is my own comment to follow up on. I think that, you know, yeah, I don't know how to do, I know this, if, I don't want to disinvest in those kids any further. And I think that it's our responsibility to take care of those kids. And I think that to some extent, Moe and I were talking about this earlier, that alternative education, I don't know the history of alternative education, but I have a sense that it wasn't just to move the kids that are struggling into a place off of the pub. But it's to provide-
It used to be a good program.
It's to provide alternative ways of learning. And I think that that's, I think that we're offering a lot of alternatives here. And that's really what we're offering here. Zoo and Blanford are alternative education models, so. And it really builds the strength of those kids that are, that are in that. So is, you know, the, you know, working with HBCUs, et cetera. I think that, the second question I have, and this goes to the right column. The, the column, the new, the growth-
Growth, growth.
Is, to some extent, and this is just a, a personal preference, a lot, other than some of the K, moves to K eights, et cetera, the new stuff is further down the road. Okay, so the sexy programs that we were going to bring back, right? So are, are down the road.
I got it.
That was our, our, anyway.
Shall I pull up the theme song?
Does it have it on your phone?
Now that I'm familiar with that.
Conversation at our retreat in August where we wanted to bring the sexy back. But really, what is it that we're, you know, what is it that we're offering that's really going to be exciting to read? Because it looks like, it's going to look like the headlines are closing schools and not bringing in new programs. And I would like to encourage us to consider, I know the IB arts program is going to take a lot more to get ready to go. And, and rushing it is not a good plan. But is there any way that some of those items on the right column could be partially invested in for this coming year? Or if we could consider with some study to, to bring on some programs sooner?
I think that I am asking for time to do the study, but I do believe that we can start right away. An example of the planned growth would be a stocking. We would start right away as soon as you finish your vote in December. If I'm allowed to move forward, I would start in January. And if we can get that program up and running, I would love it. What I don't want to happen is that we create a great plan and then not do anything well. We cannot unring this bell. And so we need to be very thoughtful and very intentional. But what I would ask you to do is to vote the plan up or down and not pick it apart. And so even if we don't start something in January, I guarantee you, I am not the person to study long. It will happen. And that is why I would like the commitment on the total plan.
Okay. Wendy?
You actually took both my questions, but I, I want more detail on both of them. I have really appreciated the superintendent's perspective that all of the children in Grand Rapids are our responsibility. And I also appreciate that with the alternative education schools. At the beginning of your presentation, you gave some pretty stark statistics regarding our dropout and graduation rate. And the starkness of them was in the alternative education schools. So that seems to, that seems to me to be a really important part of focusing in the transformation. I'm very pleased that you are unhappy with the current situation. My question is, how are we going to differentiate the alternative education? Because there is a wide variety of needs within those students. I'm wondering about partnerships, any of those that you're thinking about? And also cost concerns with, with alternative education.
I'm going to start with the last question first, and that is cost concern. I think it is even a greater cost not to do it for this community and this society. We cannot allow a thousand students to go uneducated. So I think we don't have a choice, right? When we look at Kent County Correctional Facilities, Bethany-
That's right.
Alternative, our alternative ed program at the Old Jefferson site. I think we just have to ask, what does it cost not to do it? That's one. And so I've not really looked at the budget, because I again think you create the plan and then you get the money. That's one. The second is, there are people in this community that are willing to partner with us. I had an owner of one business that said that maybe we should go and visit. I just told someone in my office today, I don't know who it was, I talked to so many people, to go and visit a particular high school in this community to see what would that look like. I have no idea who, I'll remember whoever I told to do that.
Louisville?
Louisville. I told John, and I told Natasha to go and look at that program. There is an alternative ed program in Louisville, Kentucky. They've never suspended any of the students. It's a great program. Obviously, they have figured something out. And I'm saying, how do we learn from those programs? That's one. The second piece, Dr. Faub, is, I think that we have to truly go to the people that we serve. If you ask those children, what do you need? They will tell you. I think you go to the smallest unit to find your answer.
Second question?
Did you have one or two?
I have a second question.
Okay, go ahead.
I want you to specifically, I, I'm really pleased with the plans you have for repurposing Ford. It's a beautiful building in a neighborhood with a lot of educational needs. I'm very excited to see a grade school go in there. And I'm excited about the model, but I'd like you to detail a little bit more about what that model looks like for those of us who aren't as familiar with it.
Which building, I missed that?
The Ford.
Okay. In that building, I am asking that we create an academic program that will have a strong parental involvement component and very focused on academics. And so some of the other specials that we know, students may not have. Asking for preschool students to have two specials, both Spanish and Chinese, starting at age four, and looking at some single gender classrooms as well as mixed. I would be interested in partnering with any of our fraternities and sororities to mentor children and help close the achievement gap. And it would be a district-wide without an attendance area.
Okay. Unlike Dr. Baker and Dr. Faub, I have one question.
Okay.
But I'm going to- No, no, it's going to be twofold.
One question is twofold.
Just in twofold. Like, you know, when you're pre- key, you got three points, twofold.
But just one sermon.
If we were to place an IB program at Ottawa Hills High School, would the comprehensive high school students at Ottawa Hills be eligible for entrance into the IB program? And, that's the first fold, twofold. And do you foresee any issues among the students from the comprehensive high school and the IB section? Because I only asked that portion, because I remember you were talking about the alternative ed program at Jefferson. When we had the park school students in there, there were some issues. And then I can remember back when I was in high school, we had North and South House at Ottawa Hills. And those were issues also, so it's twofold. One question, Tony.
One question. Let me try to remember. The first question is around IB at Ottawa Hills High School. You know, I am not concerned at all about the traditional Ottawa Hills comprehensive high school mixed with IB students. For years, we had PPI at Ottawa, the little kids, three-year-olds. Not a problem.
Interest, the other part was the interest eligibility aspect.
I think that any student that is interested in any program in this district, they have a right to apply. We want to encourage them to attend. So whether it's IB at Ottawa or IB at City, but will they automatically go back and forth? No. I think they would have to apply, that's one. And the other piece is, contrary to popular belief, Ottawa's a very safe school. Where, is Rodney Lewis, Rodney Lewis, right? It's a very safe school. They have worked to close that achievement gap, and in fact, is off the AYP list.
Plus having a Michigan teacher of the year.
I didn't ask that, because I know they're safe. But I asked that because it'll be, you know, like ten separate schools.
That's right, yeah. For the audience.
That's how you get three answers for those questions.
O'Connor?
You had indicated that the, the goal was to have a seventy percent capacity threshold for each of our buildings. How did we come up with that number? How do we know that that's enough? How do we know that that's not too much? Just give me some background on that if we could.
I'm going to ask Ken to answer that, but first I want, I want to share something. Because I want you to know that every building on this list will not be at seventy percent. Part of this, you guys, we're going to have to take a leap of faith.
Right, well, girl, potential.
And so I don't want you to think seventy percent is written in stone anywhere, because the day I say that, someone will say, well, I'm at sixty-nine percent. I don't want to do that, right? This is the deal. We need to shoot, that's right. And there is a tipping point for every single building in order for us not to lose money. And so part of that is going to be, where do we get to? I asked the same question about Creston. We need about seventy or eighty more students, or if we move City.
And part of, it goes beyond the, the cost to operate the building. That, that becomes somewhat fixed. But it, it's the efficiencies, it's having buildings that are under capacity, yet you're heating and cooling them, you're still staffing them, you're cleaning them. It's trying to maximize, to, to the maximums extent you can, the classroom capacity without overfilling it to spread your fixed costs with, with the maximum number of students in the classroom. And, and when I say maximum, I'm not saying fill the classroom over capacity, but you're trying to get away from the classroom that has seventeen students, back to a classroom that has twenty-five students.
And my second question, I guess, you know, we have here on our list a potential closure of ten schools from our portfolio. What are the plans for those buildings? I mean, are we going to all of them sell, sold, leased, hold on to some mothballed them for potential growth in the future? I mean, then, you know, as I've advocated for on many, many occasions, that, you know, our ownership of green space here in the city's paramount, and being good stewards of those. Any buildings we no longer retain in our portfolio, ensuring that that green space is preserved for the citizens of Grand Rapids.
I, I think a couple, a couple thoughts on what do we do with buildings? I've joked with my staff over the last five weeks and said, if we were playing Monopoly, we won. We have the property, it's about worth about three hundred million dollars. I do believe that we need to be good stewards. We are placed in this community at this time, and it is not in the best interest of this district, fifty, sixty years from now, for us to sell all of this property. We need to hold on to some for future generations, long after I'm gone. But I think it's just the right thing to do. Some of this property, we've held for over a hundred years. And to get rid of it now is the wrong thing. We will sell some. We will mothball some. It costs about fifty thousand dollars to mothball, but I would never recommend that we sell it all.
Mr. Ross?
Going back to the alternative ed piece and Pinnacle programs, definitely understanding where you're coming from as far as, you know, little bits and pieces here or there, and maybe being underserved. But I guess I do have one question, if we could find out, those students at those different programs, are they in those neighborhoods? Because I guess my concern is students that are already behind, convenience is obviously an issue. Would, would be a deterrent for them if they have to go way across town, so to speak. And that'll probably just be enough to discourage them from continuing education, since they're already behind. So I guess I'd just like to kind of get that figured out before we look to consolidate those. And so I guess, not necessarily say a question, it's more of a, you know, I'd like to see.
But I would like to address that, because in closing the Pinnacle programs, I would not recommend that we send all those children to alternative ed across town. What I am recommending is that we take them in the fold and educate them in their neighborhood.
And then, okay, all right, gotcha. And in this last piece, in regards to maybe COI High, I guess, wondering what that administrative piece would look like? Because right now, ECOI sort of has a, I don't want to say its own administrator, but, I mean, you know what I'm getting at.
Now, you're asking me to answer a question around personnel, and we do pink slips in February. So that's the first thing, so I won't respond to that specifically. But what I will tell you is, we will not have five principals in a building with seven hundred students.
Thank you.
That's my answer.
Can't answer that one.
Is that it?
You had to.
Ms. Lade?
I don't have much, other than, I think kind of maybe where Mr. O'Connor was going, I'm questioning Coville and Beckwith, whether we're going to hang on to some of these schools that, that once, you know, once we start growing, you know, which, it might be pivotal to see. I'm concerned about Beckwith because it's been closed, it's adult education, and I value that, adult education dearly. But we don't have a lot left in the Northeast End for elementary. We've moved, we're going to move them out of North Park, the elementary. Regular L is going to go out of North Park.
To Aberdeen.
Going to Aberdeen. We've closed Riverside in the past. We've, we do have East Leonard left. We've closed Beckwith, we, we, a number of them, so that we, fewer and fewer. Yeah, Palmer and Ken Hills. That's it.
I apologize, because I didn't bring my big map that I've been working with, but-
That's all.
There is a map in this presentation.
For the public.
It's not big, but-
Okay. So what I would ask is, again, that we consider holding on to property.
Okay.
Because when you look at CA-Frost and Beckwith and Sherwood, all of the properties that are right on the border, those are the properties that I would ask you to hold on.
I would, I would agree.
And so-
That's kind of where I was going, not so much as building the schools again, but those are properties that are-
You have, those are, that's right. When you look at the properties that we own in the Grand Rapids Public Schools, and again, I apologize for not bringing the large map so other people could see it. But there are about five pieces of property that we own. I would ask that we not get rid of, because you just, you never know, you never know. And so Coville is one. The other piece is, it's the property we own in partnership with the City of Grand Rapids, many of these buildings. We own the building, the city owns the part. And so we have met with the mayor and city commissioners, and we will come up with a plan. The mayor is very open to us working together, as, and we have in the past. But, so we will look at all of that.
Great, thank you.
We're mentioning Roosevelt here for a second. That Roosevelt CD is a great model example of a facility that we almost sold. But then because of this newfound interest throughout this community in investing in early childhood, we're able to partner with the ELNC, Early Learning Neighborhood Collaborative. And where they are leasing it, they're also putting about a hundred thousand dollars in private investment to upgrade the facility. We still own it.
That's right.
It becomes almost a feeder. And so we know the governor is about ready to introduce likely expansion of preschool for those at-risk youth, which would double down those, the number of seats that would be available. And so, you know, these other, these Wellerwood, the Wes, Wes Leonard, Straight, there, there's potential for those to maybe be modeled after what we did at Roosevelt or something similar. And we know that even ELNC and baby scholars have said, there are a bunch of- needed childcare seats, early childhood seats on certain parts of town in particular, but there's really no space for it. So we have potential, it's a great example of how we've been innovative, creative and working in the partnerships that exist to meet the needs of students. And still put these properties to good use, so they're not just vacant buildings.
Great, thank you.
Jane, or did you have two more?
Yeah, I just have one.
You're good, okay.
So my, my questions were along the same line. I'm wondering if we shouldn't, in addition to a secondary school redesign study, have some kind of a preschool study of our capacity and our growth, depending on the funding that comes from the state, et cetera. There should be something in that from a planned growth perspective.
Joanne Kelty is here. She can probably address some of that. Joanne, will you come down?
She's freezing too. Ken's trying to keep all our brains chilled out, so we are really smart.
I thought it was warm under the lights.
I'm actually more comfortable. Maybe because I'm in the hot seat, just a little warm back here.
I think it's warm too.
Better than it was.
So the, the question was, I'm wondering, we have a slide here in the farthest right says planned growth. I'm wondering if we shouldn't invest in some kind of a preschool redesign study across the system to say, what is, what is preschool going to look like in the future for Grand Rapids Public Schools?
I think that probably would be wise, that there are a lot of changes happening at state level and funding and slots. So there will possibly be some more information that they will be soon to help us give more direction to that. But certainly, as you plan forward, I do think that would be.
So the, the other question sort of tailing onto something you said, Teresa, was the idea of, of putting preschools into the programs that they ultimately will be in? Like for example, expanding preschool at the various elementary schools. Is that, is that kind of the game plan at this point or?
It is. Actually, a few years ago, a couple of years ago, we really looked at our preschool standalone programs and decided at that time that we should invest in preschool programs in the neighborhood, in the buildings. And it was a way for us to attract and retain students. Parents want preschool, and so we moved many of our programs in the buildings. And even when we built many of our new buildings, we anticipated preschool programs.
So I'm guessing that's what's supporting your statement about expanding or reinvesting in Children's House for Montessori? That same philosophy of investment pre-K?
Right, in order to build that program.
So is, so is the idea of the preschool university going to change? You're putting a lot of preschools together at Kennesha, but now I'm hearing that you really want them.
Those are, those are standalone programs that we will move to one building. They are not the current preschool programs that are in the building, so two different types.
They're the ones that are coming from Wes Leonard.
That's right. Great question.
And Richmore.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Great clarification question.
You good?
I am. I only have one more question.
Okay, I have a question about the budget. So we're looking at almost five million savings from this plan. Typically, we receive budget information from the state in the spring. We don't know what that is, so we can't anticipate what we'll need to cut at that point. So to have a plan that we're making a decision in December that, you know, would allow us a five million, close to five million dollar savings, which you're planning to already invest, you know, about two and a half of that back into the program and then putting the other half into fund balance in advance of receiving the budgetary information from the state. Tell me the thinking behind making this decision before we get those numbers, the information from the state.
Unfortunately, we always get our numbers late from the state on the budget. It is a moving target. I have every intention of providing you with a three-year proposed budget. We are working with someone from the Michigan Office of School Business Association to do that. I have also asked that we consider a zero-based budget. And part of the reason is, we have legacy costs that we tend to move forward with because we've always done it. In order, in order to create the best possible programs and fund them, we need to examine everything that's on the table and then make the decision. Is this the best way to move forward or are we doing it because we've always done it? So part of this energy will also move forward with a zero-based budget per se.
Okay, so your three-year budget, you know, that you're planning, would we receive this, would we receive that in advance of December seventeenth?
No, what you will receive in advance of December seventeenth is projected enrollment numbers. Because I am also, I've asked Julie to work with someone from Michigan State University to project enrollments for the district as other districts do. We have a great staff in our SIS office and they project and do a great job. But I'd feel much more comfortable if I had someone from the State Department that is projecting every other urban district in the state.
That's wise.
Just need to double check the numbers.
John, do you have any insight? I know a lot of times the governor will kind of give a preview to what he's thinking. But with it not being November seventh, he may not have done that yet. Do we have any idea of what he's looking to cut?
This is kind of a little bit of a crystal ball, but we, we feel like we've been a pretty good job of reading the tea leaves in the last couple of years. You know, number one, we know that the Oxford study that he commissioned, that Richard McClellan and a very small group of individuals have been working on the rewrite of the School Aid Act. Largely where the dollars will follow the children virtually anywhere in a voucher-like program. We know that there is a vehicle bill and that would open up the school choice and charters where virtually anyone would be able to do pretty much whatever they want to create their own school. That is definitely on the docket and it may not be that extreme, but I think we need to recognize that they're looking to make changes. Probably the biggest thing is the hundred to a hundred and twenty million it would cost to fund this early childhood. Something we all, we support expanding early childhood. We know it's a smart investment on the front end. But where are they gonna get the dollars from it? You know, the one group has said, well, it's two weeks of corrections, so let's take it from the corrections budget. Unfortunately, what we've seen from the legislature, they've been going after categorical funds. And now there is not enough money in the categorical funds to fund that, but we anticipate that there will be another round of attacks on categoricals. We've been successful in a few of them and we may be able to continue that again. The revenue projections seem to suggest that there will not be a reduction in the per pupil funding. If anything, there could be room for an increase, but again, it all depends. They may not put the increase into the foundation allowance. They might put that into funding the early childhood. And so the other thing we know is part of this, at least we're getting glimmers of this, this Michigan School Aid rewrite is the greater role of dual enrollment. And part of what they are talking about is potentially a statewide community college because there's gaps between the service areas. And what would that mean in order to bring down the enrollment rates at community college? That would, that would require funding as well. You know, they've lumped us all together. We're all, it's not just the school aid going to K-12, it is now also subsisting in community colleges. So I think we're cautiously optimistic that there, that minimum, we stay flat on the per pupil funding with a potential for an increase. The governor's famous for doing a carrot and stick approach, so there would likely be best practices again. And we're pretty calm. I mean, the early childhood seems like that is on the track, ready to go. So it's more a matter of how they fund that. And then to what extent and how aggressive they're willing to be after the November election. I think proposal two and the outcome there, there's a lot of talk that lame duck will be an aggressive session. Someone even said the term retaliation, which I don't think they'd go that far. And you have Randy Richardson on the Senate side, who's much more sympathetic than the Speaker Jace Bolger is. So we'll wait to see, but I, I think, you know, there's, there's some things we know, some things we don't. I don't think we're gonna see a big windfall of new funds by any means and we're gonna have some type of categoricals.
So that's a concern for me. To approve this in advance of knowing what the budget will look like. You know, two years ago, we had to cut twenty-three million. Last year was what, nine or something like that, so that I'm gonna need some convincing from that perspective. The other thing was, there was mention of the possibility of having a future bond. And for some of the buildings or some of the programs or something like that. And that again is another area of concern for me because I look at if we have empty buildings, if we have property and we're holding on to property and then we're asking taxpayers to, you know, pay for a bond for us, just doesn't seem the best way to manage money. But, so I just need more help and understanding. Why do we hold on and ask people to help us to renovate if we can sell some of those, some of the property to pay for our own renovations?
I would like to address, the first is waiting for the budget. We have to market schools. And unfortunately, we are not, we don't have the liberty of waiting until April to market schools. Parents need to make choices. We need to start right away. We start marketing November.
Right now.
Right now. And so I know part of this is asking you to support a plan and you will not have all the information. And that is why we have it in phase one, two, and three. But I don't believe it is in the best interest of this district to wait until March or April to market schools. I think we've missed the vote by then. That's one.
Well, let me just, let me piggyback on that because I don't disagree with that. But I'm, what I'm afraid of is in March or April, we'll be having another discussion because we'll be adding to this plan or tweaking the plan so significantly because of what comes down from the state. So that's probably, it's more of that concern than it is just not doing it at all, because I, I agree. I think because of the nature of the cycle of budgets, it is difficult to do things when you should. This is when we should market schools. And it's very difficult to do that because of, you know, the fiscal year. And so, so I agree with you, yeah.
And, and I understand, I know that you all know that there's a balance here. And I will go back and revisit to see if there's anything that we can do to lessen the blow, because we don't know what's gonna come out of November, I mean, out of the state. But what we do know is November sixth, there's an election. That will point to us in one direction.
That will tell us a lot.
And so that is before the November, the December sixteenth, seventeenth vote, so that's one. And the other thing is, I agree, asking this community for a bond is very difficult at this point. But again, I think that that's a couple, few years out. And for the property that we would ask to build, you would not be wise to take operating dollars to build. And any building that we sell, we will take those dollars and look at doing as much as we can without going to the public. We have been very, very good stewards of money. And we will continue. And anyone that knows me, I've been in Title I for almost thirty years and I've passed every audit. If anything, I'm probably a little borderline stingy. But I am very wise with money and I will be a great steward of these dollars.
I'd just add on top of that a little bit that when, if you think back to the Cambridge Report, they talked a lot about how the last ten years has been this churn of closing, consolidations, cuts, you know, a hundred million dollars worth, twenty-five schools and programs. And they talked about how that prolonged pain has actually exacerbated some of our academic and our, and our, and our operational issues. So the thought process says, go big. Get it all done as quickly as possible and then stabilize. This plan is as much about creating stability, certainty, and predictability in this district. And that's been part of our problem is that people are leaving because they don't know.
Right.
They've had a different principal for five years and they haven't, they can't, they don't know whether their teacher's gonna be back. And so part of this is in order to be ready for next year, um, post-Labor Day school start, since we're not gonna do the year-round school thing. We have basically January until then. And some of these buildings, like a Stocking, like a Ford, we're gonna have to do some investments that will take several months to get into. And so part of this is doing, is kind of doubling down now with a front-end investment and being ready for start of school. And this is a lot of change real quick, so the sooner we can get green light, get going, sooner we'll have it implemented with, with proper fidelity.
And I don't disagree with any of that and actually support all of that. But I need to know preliminary number from the State of Michigan before December seventeenth. So I don't know what it's gonna take after November sixth to see what the governor can say publicly because it's, it's a struggle to, to make a decision this significant and then possibly have to cut fifteen million dollars. And you know, and so then we'll have to come back and try and figure that out at the same time we're trying to do all of the new things that we're talking about doing. So somehow, some way, someone needs to find a number from the governor.
On the bond, I would just remind that, you know, really that process started back in two thousand and four when we passed the first bond that said, come back five years later, because that was just phase one. And we have aging infrastructure, so we've delayed. We made the conscious decision not to go out for a bond and instead go out for a relatively small, short-term, warm, safe, and dry. And so we've made, we've told the voters what, why we did it. I think the voters showed their support for that. So is it out of the realm of possibility that we could go back out? Not at all. I mean, it would be part of understanding that this is part of a broader plan. What worked before, again, there's never a great time to do that and I think the concerns you raise are absolutely spot on. But it's one where with the right plan and investment, I think the voters, they see it and they believe it. It could be something that we could take to.
We will do everything we can to get the, to get the numbers from the governor.
Thank you. Baker?
Well, I think that, actually my comments now really follow up on this. I think that, first of all, I want to say that overall, what I really like about this and, and the whole, the process, the list, the thoughtfulness is, but it's really the values that we have. I mean, I think that Teresa, they're setting a values that our job at Grand Rapids Public Schools is to educate the children that live in Grand Rapids. And all of this is about trying to figure out how to do that. And that does involve budgetary decisions, but I think that, I mean, I, so I, I don't worry as much about the money, partly because we are actually, I mean, we're, this is a, this is a budget-cutting process. I mean, we're cutting a budget here. So we're actually, I mean, I think that for, we're actually cutting out five million, we're reinvesting some of that, but we're also just using it to create a fund balance. That's, I think, responsible. But I also want to remind that we, in the past, cut arts and music and implemented blended learning. And since February, we've restored arts and music and, and gotten rid of blended learning and done it in a way that's been physically sound. So I think that cutting for the sake of cutting and then harming the product that we're offering our children is not what we need to do. So I think that this is, I really appreciate the efforts that you're making. I think it's, it's really positive. And I really think that, I also like the fact that we don't have nothing, like you said, so we don't have any hard and fast numbers. So you said the seventy percent figure is not set and sewn. We have to recognize and I don't think that we should be conceding future children. We know from that list over that there are children that live in Grand Rapids that are not going to our schools. We shouldn't concede that that will be a permanent situation. That we should be planning to educate the children that live in Grand Rapids and that that's our work. And so I really want to applaud you for that, for that value with some sense of the fact that there are some budget realities as well. With that said, I think the other thing, this will be a question too, but it is a comment that I, I really want people to recognize that this is a process. When we had our retreat in August, we said, one of the primary things we wanted out of this is that the community not only should get a chance to respond. is that the community not only should get a chance to respond, but they should have a chance to change the plan. And I think that this, and I want to ask you more about specifically what you're doing, but you have persistently been saying, I, I read this somewhat, and there's the questions I have, but I don't know, none of the neighborhoods where these schools are, are being closed are my neighborhood. So, I don't know the consequences of it. A few years ago, um, when we closed Stocking, prior to the announcement of that closing, I didn't know the consequences of closing that school. I did think that the community needed to play a part in it. We learned the consequences of that, of closing that school, and we closed it anyway, and it was a mistake. And I think that in this case, um, I'd like to ask you for more of it. I mean, you know, throughout your comments, you're saying, we're gonna ask the neighborhoods, we're gonna ask the kids, what do they need? But, um, if you can comment a little bit more about your plans for including the community.
I can. Um, actually, I have a, a schedule between now and December sixteenth, um, to visit practically every neighborhood and every group in this community. And I think, John, it starts probably tomorrow. Um, but I am available. I will make myself available to hear. Because again, I can sit in my office and create the plan that I think we should follow. But we really need to go to those that are allowing us to serve. That's one. And the second is, um, I think everyone in this room at, at this table, the nine of you plus myself, we cannot be so wedded to any one idea in this plan that we're not willing to listen. You don't live in these communities. I don't. We need to go and allow people to have a voice. Now, at the end of the day, I am going to ask you to make a higher decision. And the decision can't be, we will do nothing. I will not lead this district off the cliff. I will ask you to make a decision on December seventeenth, so we can all go home for break. Whether it's one school or ten schools, we need to plan for the future of this district. We need to reinvest in every classroom. You can't do that when we are spending so much money on buildings that are half-full. Doesn't make sense.
Agreed.
I saw as one of the weakness, I, we, our COIs have a lot of strengths and a lot of innovation that I think the community isn't completely aware of. I don't, I think they don't even know they exist, um, the partnerships and some of the really creative learning that's going on in those programs. I did personally see as a weakness in some of those programs, the way we were doing blended learning. So I'm very pleased that you also share that perspective and plan on changing that curriculum. Um, my question is, with those, how are we planning on marketing those schools? And do we have, um, do we have enrollment targets we want for each of those programs? And what, what do those numbers look like? And how are we gonna go about to achieve those? And is that in a one-year target, or do we have a long-term target for each of those programs?
Great question. I do believe the Centers of Innovation High is one of our secret weapons. It's, will be located at Central High School. We have many, many partners. Matter of fact, we just got a new, uh, commitment from Ferris State. And so, it's opportunities like that. These students, they can graduate with a certificate, with college credit. And the way to do that is not online. By moving all of these programs to one building, these students can share AP teachers. They can come together, uh, with like minds. We have seven hundred slots available. So my plan is to hit higher. We will not concede you guys to other districts, I'm telling you. We will go after our children, but we have to be the best.
The other question is about Stocking. When we closed Stocking, um, those students were dispersed to Sibley and Harrison. What capacity are those schools are at? Where would these students come from? Will it leave these, leave our other schools at, um, unacceptable capacity? Where are those students coming from with Stocking?
Once we redraw the attendance area for Stocking, we will allow parents to make the choice of coming back to Stocking. We will also allow those that are in the other schools to stay. We will have to work with each individual family and help them make the choice. We do believe we have enough students in the southwest, on the northwest side of town, southwest, that will go to Stocking, Sibley. Remember, we removed Kovale? To redistrict Harrison? Harrison is at capacity. So you have to look at that entire region as one, and then allow people to make choices.
Can I piggyback on that one? Is there a way to survey that community? I think I read that it's two or three million to bring Stocking, to reopen Stocking. So is there a way to do the surveying of those communities in advance of just, you know, spending the money if you don't have the people ready to go back? Especially with challenged scholars and all of that?
Uh, I apologize, Walter DeBoer is not here, but I will tell you, yes, we can survey. Walter will be happy to do that.
Thanks, Walter.
I hope he's watching. Mel is saying yes. Mel is his boss. We will be happy to survey.
Easy for Mel to say.
Reverend Hoskins, do you have anything else?
Yes, ma'am. Um, just really thankful for all the community members that were here and that are yet here, that came out and just being, you know, attentive and seemingly, you know, they weren't very engaged. But to that end, um, we have a packet that has a schedule of community meetings. I guess the question would be, are these community meetings on our website so that they can?
They're out there.
They're out there, you mean?
Thirty-one.
Four thirty-one.
Twenty-nine.
Right?
So then.
You have to call this meeting to order. It's out there.
Then, you guys in the community, please show up at those meetings and have input.
That's right.
That will be your opportunity to have input in all those things. And, uh, they are out there as of four thirty-one PM.
Household today.
Yeah, I saw one when I was leaving, coming to my house, but I didn't get a chance to see. Yeah, yeah. So you should have a parent.
Eight by eleven, note card.
Right, yeah, pretty stiff. Thank you, that's all I have.
Did you want to add something he said, or no? Okay.
Um, I guess I really don't have any questions left. I just, first of all, I just want to say thank you to you and your staff for your willingness to be bold here. You know, it's been a, kind of a long time coming, I think, that, that we know that something needs to be done. And, uh, I'm excited to, to go down this journey, as I think all of us are. Um, it's, I think, living here in Grand Rapids, we've seen that, you know, this, this city and these, the people in this region like to do things a little differently than some of the other places in Michigan. And, uh, it feels good for us to, you know, kind of hop on those coattails and, and do it ourselves, and show, show the, the people of Michigan that we do, continue to do things differently here. So I guess my last question is related to the community and asking them to, to get on board with us, our, our, you know, our other partners in the region, our nonprofit friends, our elected official friends, and ask them all to come out and, and the community to come support us in what we're doing here, and, and help us sell this to our families and our parents so that, you know, we can pull this off and make this a success, so that, you know, GRPS is here for the long haul.
Well, let me just say this, and then I'll come back to you, Reverend Hoskins. We've gone around probably three times at the, at minimum. Do we have any further questions? We can just kind of raise your hand, and I'll take it, and we can try and wrap this up. So Kenny, then Jane?
Mine wasn't a question, just kind of piggybacking on what Mr. O'Connor said to the community. And I, I know they know this, but I just want to reiterate it. Grand Rapids Public Schools, I think, is the second-largest employer in this area, in this region. So even if you do not have a student in the public schools in Grand Rapids, uh, if you don't have grandchildren or anybody, you still have a vested interest if you live in this region. Because being the second-largest employer, um, as Grand Rapids Public School goes up or down, so goes this region, so that to me would be a good incentive to, to be involved.
Jane?
Couple more questions, sorry. Turning schools into K eights, is there any, um, other than, um, rooms and moves? Is there additional things that are required by six through eight that aren't required in a elementary school program?
We would have to work with, uh, GREA on, um, figuring out what's the best way to post. Um, that would be one. Um, certification, we would look, uh, work with HR on the certification, so to see if people are certified six, eight, or if we do it as a middle school.
Within the?
Right. Or K eight. Right. And so, the certification. So we would have to work with our, uh, our friends at GREA to figure that out. And Paul and I have talked about, um, working together to figure out the best way to move this plan forward. Because you, um, there are a lot of closures, there will be a lot of movement. And so, um, Paul and I are committed to doing this together.
And the other question is, um, the, the plan for Zoo is different than the plan for Blandford. So, is, can, can you maybe take me through that thinking of why one is expanding a single grade and the other is expanding over multiple grades?
Part of it is, again, because we believe in choice. And we have Economicology as well as City Middle High. And so, um, many families choose that. We are reinvesting in Montessori, so those are other options for parents. And so, um, although we believe in choice, we don't believe that it's the right thing to do to create all K eights, or six through eights. Some people just like sixth-grade program.
And there is a model too, um, in comparison to the Zoo School, that was six, seven, and eight. And it wasn't necessarily one for Blandford.
No, well, they're very similar. It's a place based in, in Forest.
In Forest Hills.
Yeah.
Much more like Blandford.
Which was founded by the founder of Bland, of Blandford.
Okay. So maybe those could be swapped.
Founded by the waggy.
Again, I'm not. Is that it, Jane? Is that it?
Uh, yes.
I had a question on, um, receiving maps with the attendance area maps. We had talked about this at a work session too, I think the last work session, so that we can see the number of students that are already attending that school, the number of students that are non-GRPS that live in that same attendance area, um.
This is a quick poll up to Jane's question. Was my impression the, like, the city option, I mean, not in the city, the Zoo option, the Blandford option, the Frost, that those are still kind of, those are in process, that those, those aren't set in stone. So that, it's not necessarily, okay, so, right, that will be, obviously, learning more about it now that it's out there.
Wendy, do this, do your hand?
Uh, one of the significant pieces of this plan is this expansion of the K eights throughout the district. And I think there's like seven new K eights. So with each of those, I guess I would, I'm, I'm sure you've done this work, but I would like to see currently where those fifth or sixth graders are going to middle school, and whether we will be then depleting our other middle school programs and/or whether we really will capture those children and keep them to make sure that these expansions are viable. So I, it'd be helpful for me to see that work.
That was the second part of my first question.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I forgot. I'm usually good at remembering everybody's, but anyway.
Sometimes it helps to ask it twice.
Sherwood, you were talking about reducing that from a PK eight to a PK five. That was the only one, I didn't understand what that difference was. What, what was the rationale behind that?
Because those students are ten, alder. And what we were doing is looking at the number of K eights around the district and sustaining the three comprehensive middle schools.
Okay.
Alder.
There's so many in that area.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You may recall, we had campus on that list at one point too, as a pre-K eight.
That's right.
And Sherwood, and specifically because we ran the numbers, and it said, you know what, this will, this would empty out.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Okay, yeah, I did have that.
All right. Okay. The other is with the preschool, um, I'm wondering if there's going to be any issue with any of those parents that are now bringing their children to those more northern-based programs, Wellerwood, um, West Leonard, whether that's gonna be an obstacle or barrier for them to get all the way down on Kalamazoo, south of town? Um, and how many parents that involves, and?
The students will be transported, but that may be a barrier. And that's part of what we need to go and ask people. Again, this is my best thinking, um, and the best thinking of, of my cabinet and, and members of my team that I've been working with, but I'm not wed to any one particular program.
Those are all my questions right now.
Anything else? Rayna was looking at me like, just hit the gavel. If there is nothing else, then, um, I'm just trying, I'm looking at my notes. Go ahead.
I just want to say one giant thank you to all the work that's gone into this because I know there's been hours and hours and hours by all of you guys, and I very much appreciate it.
I agree.
Teresa says everything committed to memory.
Yeah, that, that lets you know how much time.
Dennis probably can recite this, though.
That's a, that's a really good point, and I.
You say it isn't very thorough.
And I think in addition to that, thanks to this board, because we've spent a lot of hours having this conversation. We've had multiple brainstorming sessions. We have influence in this, um, plan as well, and I think it, it says a lot about, you know, the thoughtfulness that, um, each of you.
And the interface, I'm really impressed with how our brainstorming has.
Warfed into this.
Absolutely. That takes a certain skill, and I know it wasn't just us, it was all the voices that.
Absolutely. So, and, and just for the public's sake, we will have this transformation plan as an agenda item um, at every single board meeting that we have from this point until voting time. So, um, at some point, you'll hear the updates. So as we're getting additional information and modifying, you'll hear those updates on a regular basis. Um, we've asked the superintendent to, um, plan for that, even if it's just five, fifteen, twenty minutes, whatever it is, just so that we're keeping the community aware and abreast of the information. And in addition to that, um, we're also, um, making sure that it's on the website. I see a hand. Yes, so, um, to, tonight, we actually already had our public comment portion. We had that earlier, at the beginning of the meeting, we had our public comment portion. But at every single board meeting, we will have, um, public comment available. So any board, any, any audience member that's interested in giving comments will be able to. If you're looking to, you know, render any comments tonight, you know, we welcome you to come forward and, you know, share those comments quickly with us. Yes. Come to the mic, Mr. Carter.
You gotta go there.
Get rid of that chair.
Get rid of that chair. That'd be part of the plan. Okay, that's a last.
Mine is not gonna take very long.
Absolutely.
My, my first comment is that, uh, I think that it's a great plan that Teresa had brought to you guys. And no matter when, uh, you decide of doing it, I don't think it needs to be wa- waited until April or May. The, the school needs to be closed, there are a lot of wastes being taken care of right now. And you guys need to get on it and get with it and start getting rid of some of the waste. And there's a lot of waste in the school system, in the buildings, when they are being half-filled up and there's not enough people in there. Why wait until April? That's need to be done right away. And we are a bunch of concerned citizen from the Grand Rapids area, and we just want you to know that we support Teresa in anything that she comes up with. We're behind her a hundred percent.
Can you share your name for the record, please?
My name is, uh, Jimmy Carter.
Thank you.
If there isn't anything else, um, this meeting is not gonna happen.
Uh, my name is Clarence Carlisle. And, uh, I'm kind of embarrassed because this is the, probably the third time I've been to a board meeting in about twenty-five years. And I want to, uh, piggyback on what Dr. Favre was allowed. I'm also excited. And the reason why I'm excited is that I've, I've really been just discouraged by, uh, boards and, and people that the board has hired. Teresa reached out, reached out to us, it's about, maybe about fifteen or twenty of us, former educators, former business people, some are still. former educators, former business people, some are still business people. And Teresa, uh, hooked, uh, reached out to us. And so we said that, um, actually she wants us to adopt the school that we can mentor. And we haven't decided which one we want to go with yet, but we, I'm excited because she's made the whole community feel like we're a part of what's going on here. You know? And so, uh, we support Teresa in whatever it is that she's doing. We support this board. I, I, I mean, I just, I was, I'm glad I came out tonight because, you know, I just commend all of you guys for just doing the work. This is hard and difficult work. And decisions that have to be made. But, uh, you've been Obama-ish tonight.
Mister, Mister Carlisle, Mister Carlisle, I'll just say this, don't be embarrassed about this being your third time. There are a lot of people in this community who have never come. So don't be embarrassed at all. We appreciate your being here.
People, boys, former educator.
State your name for us, please, for the record. Thank you.
I retired from this district. Teresa says something about alternative ed. Supposed to having a computer. Have a engine at the teacher. Use the computer, the apparatus, online to enhance it. But you need that person in front to guide.
That's right.
No matter what you do.
That's right.
And this, not only alternative ed, it should be all of it.
That's right.
And she and I have had long talks. We will have many more. And I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
That concludes our public comment section. And this meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening. See you next week, Monday.